Good evening Wichita and welcome to all of you here at City Hall. We'll call this meeting to order. With us this evening is Pastor Philip Moore of Eden Fellowship Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we ask that you please stand for both. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Dear Lord, as we gather here today, let us remember that we should approach this job with a servant's heart. Let us pray that everybody who needs a prayer in our city and in this world receives one and let us all receive your divine wisdom. And as we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Councilmember Hoheisel. Mr. Clerk, please call the first item.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 27, 2025.
Are there any corrections for the May 27 meeting? I see none. I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 27, 2025.
Second.
Motion on the second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. Proclamations this week are LGBTQIA+ Pride Month and Wichita Area Sisters' Day of Recognition and the award is a certificate of recognition Wichita State University Cheer Team.
May please ask Councilmember Glasscock and Jim Hall of Wichita Pride to come forward.
Good evening. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas founded in 1870, whereas the Stonewall uprising began in New York City on June 28, 1969, 56 years ago this month, led by Marcia P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, transgender activists who worked on behalf of homeless LGBTQ youth and years later for those affected by the HIV/AIDS crisis were both key figures in this groundbreaking movement, whereas pride was first celebrated in New York City a year later on June 28, 1970, organized by activists Brenda Howard, Craig Rodwell, and his partner Fred Sargent, Ellen Body, and Linda Rhodes, and has continued to be celebrated since that time. Whereas an estimated 96,000 Kansans identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and/or transgender, and the city of Wichita recognizes that the LGBTQIA+ community is part of all fields and professions and contributes to a stronger community, whereas our nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes that every person has been created equal, that each has a right to live their life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection under the law. Whereas the city of Wichita is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its citizens and to preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And Kansas forbids employment discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity for state employers and state contractors, as well as protections in place to prevent discrimination. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to recognize this community within the state, country, and world, as each human deserves the same dignity, respect, and treatment, no matter who they love or how they identify."
Hello and good evening and thank you for braving the wonderful Kansas weather this evening. And most importantly, Happy Pride Month all. My name is June. I am currently serving as the Communications Director with Wichita Pride. So if you've sent us an email or seen any of our social medias interacted, sent us a like, sent us a comment, in the last 10-ish months, there's a decent chance that we've interacted. I am one of 16 individuals who dedicate their time, skill, effort, and passion to making sure that Wichita Pride and all of our events are a success each and every year. I want to express my thanks to the City Council for issuing this proclamation tonight. If you're like me, you've probably been a part of some discourse in the past couple months as to the sheer importance of these proclamations to our community. And the simple fact is that these proclamations matter for the same reason why pride matters so much, and its visibility. We represent a community that has a history of having to remain a hidden, dirty little secret of society. This is an unfortunate fact of today's day and world. Pride in any extension, this proclamation serves as an opportunity where we can celebrate our existence in the streets of our community, to show that we belong and that we aren't some dirty secret of society. We are valid members of our society who deserve recognition of our humanity. This is a topic that I am personally very passionate about. Personally, I'm 29. I didn't begin my queer journey until I was well into my twenties. I didn't dare love anyone who wasn't the correct person because I didn't know that that was an option. I didn't understand why my parents were so upset to see two men kissing on TV. A show of love and affection was offensive. I didn't understand why my first attempts at jewelry and makeup were met with such ridicule and bullying. I knew from a young age what the term faggot meant, but I didn't understand why this was such a bad thing. Why was this fighting words? I didn't grow up so far from Wichita. I was born here in Wichita. I've never lived outside the state of Kansas. And I am not so old that this is some relic of the past, some distant issue. This is something that many in our community still suffer today. We celebrate our existence this month loud and proud so that none in our community have to feel alone or feel that they aren't loved and accepted. Through this proclamation and this and every other pride, we are able to say we see each and every member of the LGBTQIA+ community here in Wichita and the surrounding area. We invite all who are in the community and who are allies to come out to the vast variety of Wichita Pride events, including our festival and parade on June 28th, and we encourage you to attend other Pride events in and around the city put on by other organizations. Thank you.
May please invite the Wichita Area Sister Cities Committee and members, including Councilmember Glasscock, who serves on the Sister Cities Committee.
The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas founded in 1870, whereas the city of Wichita is celebrating 52 years of cooperation and friendship with our sister city of Talapantla de Paz, Mexico, whereas the citizen ambassadors of Talapantla, Mexico have arrived to bring greetings of friendship from President Rasiel Perez Cruz and the citizenry of the municipality of Talapantla de Paz, Mexico, and are present with us here today. Whereas the cyclists of Talapantla have just completed their 16th 1,400-mile, 13-day extreme cycling trek from beautiful Talapantla to our fair city and celebrate River Fest with us. Whereas Wichita Area Sister Cities, as the citizen diplomat corps of the citizens of Wichita, wishes to honor the distinguished athletes and guests representing the municipality of Talapantla de Paz, Mexico, as our esteemed sister city. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim June 3, 2025, as Wichita Area Sister Cities Day of Recognition in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to celebrate with us this noble relationship originally created by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in an effort to encourage world peace through lasting international friendships between nations."
What a privilege it is to be here to address all of you tonight and to present our esteemed guests from Talapantla de Paz, Mexico. My family lives there and it is a place that I love very much. I'm so glad that it is a sister city. Probably due to the fact that it's a sister city, I ended up in Talapantla some years ago. So the Wichita Area Sister Cities represents not only Talapantla de Paz, Mexico, but also Cancun, Mexico, Orleans, France, and Kaifung, China. And those friendships are friendships that are long-lasting. We have been friends with Talapantla for 52 years now, with Orleans for 52 years, and for Kaifung, China, slightly less time. But in that period of time, we have made friendships and had cooperations that are mutually beneficial to all the cities and that causes us to have great pride and realize the vision and the mission that President Eisenhower, right after World War II began, that of fomenting international friendships as a way of promoting world peace. So without more ado, I'd like to present to you the cyclists of Talapantla. We have Luis Enrique Fierro, Martha Flores, Nicolas Montoro, and Victor Plata. Victor Plata. And they have done an incredible act of sacrifice to be with us all here today. Also, we'd like to thank the council and the mayor. We have been so beautifully received this year and we just appreciate all the acts of love from the city and from the citizens. It was really something palpable to be in the River Fest sundown parade and to see all the love that was sent our way. So we appreciate being able to be here tonight and the proclamation of June the 3rd as the Day of Recognition for Wichita Area Sister Cities and our friendship with Talapantla de Paz, Mexico.
May please ask the Wichita State University Cheer Team to please come forward at this time. And any Wichita State Shockers on the council to come forward too. This is a special recognition on behalf of the city of Wichita and the City Council. This recognition is for the Wichita State University Cheer Team in honor of their remarkable achievement as national champions, Division I Intermediate Large Coed. Give them a round of applause. This special recognition is for their dedication, teamwork, and excellence in bringing pride to Wichita State University and our entire community. This national title also reflects values that make our community strong. Hard work, resilience, and the true spirit of champions serves as an inspiration to all of us here in Wichita and beyond. Congratulations Wichita State University Cheer Team.
I wasn't prepared to talk, but I just want to say thank you guys so much for the support that we have received from the city of Wichita and thank you mayor so much for this recognition today. We appreciate everything and we love being able to represent you guys as well as the university and all the athletic programs. So thank you.
Thank you again to the Wichita State University Cheer Team. Another round of applause to them. At this time, I would like to invite the Citizens Fire Academy to come forward with the Wichita Fire Department. Good evening. This is the 16th class of the Citizens Fire Academy. There are 13 students who will be graduating from the program today. Students experience pressures firefighters face every day. They perform search and rescue tactics and also got a glimpse of how one cannot see while searching. All students were able to put hands on and use extrication tools known as the jaws of life and become familiar with the weight of the cutters and the spreaders. Students were able to drag hose lines and gear as well as open the nozzle to wet down surfaces. They also learned a lot of history of the Wichita Fire Department from a visit at the Firefighters Museum. Students also were able to sit down with the chiefs of the fire department to ask questions and create dialogue. Guest speakers, as well as many in leadership, also were able to talk with these students. This is an opportunity again for civic engagement and we encourage individuals in our community. If you're interested in learning more about the Wichita Fire Department, as well as the Wichita Police Department, to join the two academies that are available in the community. That information is available at wichita.gov under Government and then following Civic Engagement. At this time, I would like to invite Chief Tammy Snow to speak about this class.
Thank you mayor and City Council. Just wanted to real shortly say thank you very much to these 13 participants of the Citizens Fire Academy for giving us 10 weeks of their time and the opportunity for us to show them and help them understand what we do on a daily basis. Giving them a really short glimpse and providing them a lot of information and that was specifically due to our two Community Risk Reduction Officers, Morgan and also Johnson. Truly appreciate them embracing. The comments that I've received from this graduate, graduation class is that their performance was stellar. So truly would invite you to come join us, allow us the opportunity to not only show you some public safety, but also to show you what we do on a daily basis. And with that, I would like to invite Greg Cockworth to the stand for a few comments.
Good evening and mayor, WOU, City Council members, and distinguished guests. Around 8:00 PM on April 2nd, I was having trouble breathing. Smoke filled the air. As I was on my knees, low to the ground, I reached out. I couldn't even see my hand, just five inches from my face. And at that moment, my respect for firefighters skyrocketed to a whole new level. And thankfully on April 2nd, that was just a drill. Those minutes in the smokehouse at the Regional Fire Training Center were just a few of the incredible moments that I and other members of the academy behind me experienced in the last three months. We pulled, aimed, squeezed, and swept fire extinguishers. That's the PAS acronym for nobody who hasn't learned that yet. We forced doors to open with a halogen bar, but remember, try before you pry. We smashed vehicles with radio antennas. Really, it's that cool and easy. We pried and cut through car metal with the jaws of life. Yeah, that was fun. But thankfully, not in a serious situation then. And as mentioned, we dragged hoes, we climbed stairs, we learned countless facts about uniforms, inspections, trucks, budgets, and of course, the history of firefighting in Wichita. But for the record, for the record, under no circumstances and absolutely, we did not slide down the poles at Fire Station 1. Most importantly, we met amazing people. Chiefs, captains, lieutenants, EMTs, firefighters, awesome individuals, and each one of them as tough as this brick. And together, 500 bricks like this, working strong together to keep Wichita State, Wichita safe. As mentioned, three of those individuals played a key role in the Citizens Academy. Each week, Kathy Kennard, I lost you Kathy, where'd you go? She's hiding over there, always behind the scenes. Kathy, Lieutenant Johnson, Lieutenant Morgan, coordinated activities and introduced us so many of the building blocks of the Wichita Fire Department. In their honor, and they don't know this, I am proud to announce that our class is going to buy three bricks like this one at the Kansas Firefighters Memorial that's on South Broadway. Those bricks will list the members' initials of the class behind me and then give thanks to Kathy, Jason, and Mo for your leadership. We appreciate you guys. It has been a very, very fun 10 weeks. So on behalf of these people behind me, Bridget, Cody, Dan, and Dean, Kevin, Mai, Michaela, Phil, Quincy, Stephanie, Toni-Anne, Zach, thank you Chief Snow, and the other white shirts behind us here, for all the instructor, all the instructions, the instructors, the opportunity to learn, observe, and ask you so, so many questions. And to the 500 bricks, I know you guys were watching out there, probably blocking off streets and helping pull out cars from water right now. The other 500 bricks, the other 500 firefighters who make up the fire department, thank you sincerely for your strength, your grit, your passion, your excellence, and your non-stop innovation. Stay safe out there.
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Public Agenda. The public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda, other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Barb Myers, upkeep and preservation at Highland Cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First individual is Barb Myers.
Good evening. My name is Barb Myers. I live at 1621 North Melrose here in Wichita. I'm here tonight because one of Wichita's oldest historical locations, Highland Cemetery, is also one of its most neglected. In case you haven't heard of it, Highland Cemetery is on the northwest corner of Ninth and Hillside. It was founded in 1870 by Henry Smith. When he received his land grant, there were about 15 burials already there. Many of Wichita's founders and early business leaders are now buried among the over 17,000 that are there now, including one governor, 12 mayors, three sheriffs, and six marshals. In 1982, Highland Cemetery was abandoned by the Lot Owners Association and the city of Wichita was required to take ownership. Today, the city of Wichita is responsible for four cemetery entities which are located in three districts. Highland and Jamesburg Park Cemeteries and the Old Mission and Highland Mausoleums. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends of the Wichita Pioneers. Several volunteer groups over the decades have assisted the city of Wichita with maintenance at Highland. In 2016, the Friends proudly joined that list. While working on my master's thesis in history at WSU, I founded the nonprofit Friends of the Wichita Pioneers and since 2016, we have repaired hundreds of markers for thousands of people. We have led countless historic tours for all ages, providing education about our city's history, preservation methods, and cemetery etiquette. And we are now working on a National Register of Historic Places nomination. So tonight, we ask three things. One, we ask that the city periodically make necessary equipment and labor available to the Friends so that when we need to work on large monuments, we can do so and repair them as families have requested. Two, we ask that the city's Historic Preservation Board form a Municipal Cemetery Preservation Advisory Committee, which would advise the board and the city's public works and parks departments on the status of all four cities' cemetery entities and their upkeep. And three, we would like the city to explain what the purpose is for the Cemetery Trust Fund. The city's website says that it is, quote, "for maintaining and caring for the graves and beautifying and improving the city's cemeteries." In May, a post on our Facebook page showed numerous gravestones at Highland which had recently been vandalized. Many of those were markers that we had already repaired. While we know that the city is not responsible for the actual vandalism, we do believe the city of Wichita could do more to protect Highland. In fact, two different news outlets contacted the city park department and were told that there was no money available to take care of the damage at the cemetery, that it was the family's responsibility. If that is the case, then what is the trust in place for? Is that not beautification? And what if these were for people that had already died centuries ago, a century ago, and there is no family left there? Who takes care of theirs then? We realize that there is only a small percentage of park funds allocated for city cemeteries, something along the lines of 124,000 annually, and most of that is for grounds upkeep, in other words, grass and trees. So could some of the trust money be used for cameras, for instance, to catch future vandals, if not being used for repairs? In closing, we are honored to serve the descendants of the In closing, we are honored to serve the descendants of the founders of Wichita by maintaining their families' final resting places. We will do everything that we can to honor their trust in us. We hope that the city agrees that maintaining Highland, as well as all of the other historic sites in Wichita, is beneficial not only to honoring our history, but preserving our future. And, if you've never been there, Mayor Wu, I would extend an invitation to you and to the city council for a guided historic tour of Highland. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb, and I will take you up on that offer. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you for being here today. We appreciate it. I've been in council for seven years now, and this is the first time we've had somebody come talk to us about one of our cemeteries, so I do appreciate it, and I will also take you up on that tour. I see we have Director Davis with us here, and then also, Mr. Manager, could you just address the Cemetery Trust Fund and maybe help to try and answer some of the Ms. Myers' questions? Thank you.
Mayor, the Cemetery Trust Fund, what I'd like to do is prepare a report for the council, and we'll also get back with Ms. Myers about the legal obligations and the restrictions that we have on spending funds out of the trust fund. Thank you.
And did you want Reggie to speak as well?
Reggie, Director, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to add, or would you just like to have that be a part of the report that's presented to council from the manager?
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your excellent work, as always.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Myers, I think those are reasonable requests to get answers that you've requested, so we'll get back to you on that. In addition, I would also take you up on that offer. I noticed that your contact information wasn't on the document that we had too, so if you could just email the council, that would be helpful.
Thank you again, Barb, and we will reach out. I know for sure you have three individuals on the council who want to take you up on that tour. And again, the safety and honoring of our history is one of the things that we, many of our council members, really take as a priority. And so I want you to know that, number one, you will hear back from staff regarding your requests, but number two, we will definitely be attending the tour. Thank you, Barb. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Sam Barber, promoting the inaugural season of the Athletes Unlimited Softball League, AUSL.
Do we have Sam? We do not. So, Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Danny Gaines, Kansas State Finals of the National Civics B hosted by the Kansas Leadership Center.
Good evening. My name is Danny Gaines. I am the Journal Manager at the Kansas Leadership Center, and I'm here to promote and invite you personally to the Kansas State Finals of the National Civics B. What is the Civics B? The Civics B is a civics competition for middle school students from sixth to eighth grade, and the Kansas State Finals is a culmination of civics Bs around Kansas. So we will have 15 finalists from Wichita, Overland Park, Salina, Hutchinson, and Pittsburgh, competing for a first-place spot. The first-place winner will then proceed to Washington, DC, where they will compete for first place again, and the first-place winner will receive a $100,000 education savings fund. So, in the Civics B, the middle school students work through two rounds of civics questions. They spend almost an entire year studying civics, studying the history of our country, learning about civic virtues and our founding principles. And following those two rounds, they have a third round where they engage with three judges from our city in a Q and A. And they present an essay that they've written about a civic issue in their community. So they come up with something that needs attention in their community, they speak on that issue, who needs to be engaged to make progress on the issue, how they would receive funding, and how ultimately they could fix this community problem. From there, a winner is announced. But our Kansas State Finals is more than just a student competition. We are aiming to build a civic movement in Wichita. So in addition to our competition, we have four hours of civic programming. So we have a fantastic, nationally-known keynote speaker, Manu Miel, from Bridge USA. We have a corporate social responsibility panel hosted by Fidelity Bank that features four individuals from Wichita that are focused on corporate social responsibility here in our city. This event takes place this Thursday, June 5th, from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. We would love attendance for the full day, but most particularly, the student competition from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. In addition to this, just kind of a cool note, we requested a proclamation from the state of Kansas for Youth Civics Day, and that was granted. So Thursday, June 5th, the day of the Civics B, is Youth Civics Day, so we're really proud of that. We would love your attendance if you're able to join. If you're not able to join, we would love for you to promote the event if you so wish or are able to do so. We have lots of different material online about this event, but like I mentioned, this is a student competition, a really great way to encourage, inspire, and promote civic engagement in our youth, but also help us to create the civic movement in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Danny, I would just like to say thank you for coming to share. I had the pleasure of sitting on the panel last year to judge, and it was very impressive, very big topics that are local, state, and national issues that we're all dealing with. And the kids were very well-spoken and very interesting to listen to and participate in. So thank you for coming to share that, and we'll make sure that we promote it on our end.
Thank you, Danny. And again, it's Thursday, June 5th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM is the student portion of the competition at the Kansas Leadership Center in downtown Wichita. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Charles Nsarsian, zoning case 2025, number 10.
Is Charles here today? I don't see Charles. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Alyssa DePontier, zoning case 2025, 10.
Alyssa here today? I do not see Alyssa. So, we have three spots left for public comment, and if there are three individuals who would like to speak before the council, you may just come to the podium, state your name, and where you live. I see none. I will now move on. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent agenda items 1 through 12.
Councilmembers, are there any items to be polled? I see none. I move to approve consent agenda items 1 through 13.
Second.
1 through 12. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Board of bids and contracts dated June 2nd, 2025.
Good evening. Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. Board of bids and contracts convened June 2nd, 2025 for the following items. For engineering, we have the Forest View and Forest View Court with incidental stormwater sewer improvements to serve Bridger at Central Edition. For Conspec Incorporated, doing business as Kansas Paving, for $386,109.10. We have the 2025 Outsource Paving Preservation Program, CIP Concrete Street Repairs Phase III, for Conspec Incorporated, doing business as Kansas Paving, awarded to the engineer's estimate for $521,880.80 from the original bid of $434,834. We have the 2025 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, Joint and Crack Seal Phase III, for Innovative Road Composites LLC, $190,349.30. We have the Wichita Water Treatment Plant, two grit chamber repairs for Utility Maintenance Contractors LLC, for $213,900. We have the Maple Street Booster Pump Station for Don Linger &amp; Sons Construction Company Incorporated, for $3,061,976. We have the 2025 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Phase B for Mayor Specialty Services LLC, for $91,704.97. We have the St. Francis Street to serve Bridgeport Industrial Park I Edition for Pearson Construction LLC, for $237,135.50. We have the Water Main Water Distribution System Stormwater Drain Number 525, sanitary sewer paving to serve Pegasus and Pegasus Second Edition Tide Rebid for Meese Construction Incorporated, for an aggregate bid total of $6,604,947.30. We have the roof replacement for Evergreen Park Recreation Building for AR Commercial Roofing LLC, for $480,000. We have the nuisance code wrecker services for kids towing and recovery for the rates listed for one year with four one-year options to renew. We have one hydro excavator vacuum truck for Key Equipment and Supply Company, for We have the rehabilitation of existing bleachers at Barry Sanders Football Field for Heartland Seating Incorporated, for $99,390.60. We have the thermal imaging cameras for Wees Fire and Safety Equipment LLC, for $113,087.50. And have the false alarm registration and management services contract change order for Central Square Technologies, requesting your authorization to extend the contract 180 days. For airport, we have one Caterpillar motor grader for Fully Equipment Company Incorporated, for $398,774.29. This is how to become a vendor with the city. This is a purchasing calendar of small business resource partner events the city is hosting or participating in. These are open public opportunities out on the street today, and I would recommend your approval and be happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Josh. Any questions for staff? I see none. I move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts dated June 2nd, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Property maintenance codes.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. Probably got 30 to 50 slides here. I'm going to try to walk through this as quickly as possible. This was originally sort of geared towards a workshop, and so feel free to chime in at any point in time if you have any questions, comments, concerns. The formal action will be sort of just to simply receive and file, but there will be some opportunities throughout this that we will ask for a little bit of policy guidance and direction as we prepare for some next steps. So this is intended to be a little bit interactive, so again, feel free to chime in as you see Little bit of background, a little bit of history, right? Some of you may recall, some of this may look familiar to you all. I'm going to start tonight with a little bit of context around sort of property owner rights and responsibilities. We'll get into some municipal code review, we'll get in to talk about the International Property Maintenance Code. We'll kind of wrap up with kind of some next steps around policies and procedures and performance measures, right? But let me begin with kind of an overarching kind of theme of making sure that we're not dismissing recognition of property owner rights, right? Property owners have certain inalienable rights. We get that. Property owners have the right to acquire, use, and dispose of property freely, so long as those actions do not violate the rights of others. We have Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the U.S. Constitution, we have Kansas property and real estate laws. But on the other half of property owner rights, right, are property owner responsibilities. We live in a modern, urbanized society, and along with property owner rights come property owner responsibilities. So generally speaking, property owners are legally obligated to provide a reasonable care and maintenance of their property to ensure that it's safe from dangerous conditions. This goes for commercial property, this goes for residential property, this even goes towards Wichita Housing Authority, right? It's inclusive of everybody, owners, landlords, operators, occupants, tenants, right? So I'm going to read an excerpt here that really just tries to kind of drive this point home, right? This comes right out of the International Property Maintenance Code, and it really leans in on kind of both aspects of this, right? That the owner of the premise shall maintain the structures and the exterior property in compliance with these requirements, except as otherwise provided for in code. A person shall not occupy as owner/occupant or permit any other person to occupy the premises that are not in a sanitary and safe condition, and they not comply with the requirements of the chapter. Occupants also of a dwelling unit, rooming unit, or housekeeping unit are responsible for keeping in a clean, sanitary, and safe condition. That part of the dwelling unit, rooming unit, housekeeping unit, or premise they occupy and control. But these aren't new concepts, right? These are some excerpts, some sections right out of the city's Wichita Municipal Code. Wichita Municipal Code Section 2004030, there's some minimum standards for basic equipment and facilities, minimum standards for light ventilation, electricity, and heating, general requirements related to safe and sanitary maintenance of parts of dwellings and dwelling units. Specifically, no owner or operator shall occupy as owner/occupant or permit another to occupy any dwelling or dwelling unit for the purpose of which does not comply, and then there's a whole host of other regulations. Additionally, the responsibility of owners and occupants generally, again, every owner shall be responsible for maintaining in a clean and sanitary condition, and subsection two, every occupant of a dwelling or dwelling unit shall keep in a clean and sanitary condition. So again, just continuing to drive home the point that there's a balance between property owner rights, but also property owner responsibilities. And this is also inclusive of not only owners, owner/occupants, but also tenants, right? So, back in August of 2023, when we had a workshop and we kind of set forth where we were going to try to go with this, there spun out of that a number of conversations. One in particular was an educational campaign, right? You may recall. And as a byproduct of that, we have developed an owner/tenant landlord/tenant handbook that's available on our city's website, as well as we have a number of published copies that we have available for distribution. So let me talk a little bit about, we've talked about property owner sort of rights and responsibilities. I'm going to go a little bit further into occupants and tenants' rights and responsibilities, right? So occupants and tenants have the right to live in a habitable rental property. This general means that it must be free of any serious health or safety threats, vermin infestations, and functioning plumbing and electricity. More broadly, across the nation, there's sort of a legalese type of, and I'm going to be really, really careful not being an attorney, I love to play junior attorney a lot, but there's this terminology where I call warranty of habitability, right? So, most courts recognize an implied warranty of habitability in residential leases, even if the rental agreement doesn't outline the landlord's responsibility. The warranty ensures the landlord's following local housing codes. Under the implied warranty of habitability, there's all of these assurances, again, this is all stuff we kind of touched on a couple months ago. So while occupants and tenants have rights, as we just kind of talked about, occupants and tenants also have responsibilities, right? This is a section that comes right out of the International Property Maintenance Code. Occupants of a dwelling unit, rooming unit, or housekeeping unit are responsible for keeping it in a clean, sanitary, and safe condition. Additionally, not new, we have some of that language in the existing municipal code. Every occupant of a dwelling unit shall keep it in clean and sanitary condition, and otherwise abide by all other terms and conditions of the lease agreement. So again, kind of spinning out of the conversation that we had in and around August of 2023, we also created a retaliatory evictions ordinance, preventing landlords from retaliating against tenants. Retaliatory being defined as sort of a commencement of eviction, or increasing rent, or reduction of services provided by the landlord. That was adopted by City Council That was adopted by city council in January of 2024. Okay, so out of that August workshop, right? One of the first things that we said we were going to do is kind of go take a look at the city's municipal code. As we went through the city's municipal code, what we came to quickly realize was that the code is duplicative across multiple titles, resulting in confusion, right? So the general consensus is that we, at a minimum, need a consolidated property maintenance code. We need one code that addresses sort of all aspects of property maintenance, okay? One easy-to-reference municipal code section that can easily share with property owners, landlords, and occupants and tenants. We looked at Title VII, VIII, XVIII, and XX. And then we also reviewed the International Property Maintenance Code. This is something generally understood as kind of an industry standard best practice. So let me talk a little bit about the IPMC. So one of the reasons why this is generally understood to be kind of that industry standard best practice, right, is it's a vetted, professionally-developed body of work based on best practices, case law, technical standards. It's part of the International Code Council family of codes, which, for those of you that are not familiar, the International Building Code, Residential Code, Fire Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, and the laundry list goes on and on, a number of which of those individual codes we have adopted as part of the Unified Trade Code between the city and Sedgwick County. Again, designed to work with Building, Fire, Plumbing, and Mechanical Codes, specifically those of the International Code Council. Additionally, now, there hasn't been significant changes per se as it relates to the International Property Maintenance Code over the years, but the International Code Council puts out sort of new versions about every three years. It's an opportunity for communities to sort of revisit and become aware and abreast of new trends, new technology, new standards, new practices. Again, we haven't seen a lot of evolution of the International Property Maintenance Code over the years, but you all are extremely familiar with, as we continue to adopt new cycles of the Building Code, Fire Code, so on and so forth, how local amendments come into play. More specifically jurisdictions can adopt individual codes. It's always encouraged to adopt with local amendments to fit local needs. So specifically, International Property Maintenance Code again has been adopted by hundreds of jurisdictions across the nation. It's got a strong track record, legal credibility. This is just a sampling of cities in Kansas that have adopted the International Property Maintenance Code in some form or fashion. Topeka, Manhattan, Overland Park, Lawrence, Kansas City. So the approach that we are looking at is sort of a repeal and replace, right? It's going to be a little bit nuanced. Again, because some of the existing language is so intertwined in some of those titles and chapters, when we bring back an ordinance, you're going to see probably more specifically sort of chapters and verses that are repealed and replaced and not just entire titles and chapters, right? Because there's a lot of stuff still in Title VII and Title VIII that is not associated with property maintenance codes that we're going to want to leave in those respective titles and chapters. And then at the end, we're going to replace Title 20, more specifically, sections of Title 20 with the International Property Maintenance Code. Okay, so this is just a real quick highlight of the International Property Maintenance Code, how it's organized, right? And I didn't bring a copy with me tonight, right? But if you've ever seen a copy of it, it's not that big. There you go. It's not that thick, right? It's actually a pretty small reference, and it's designed in such a way, right, that it's sort of designed to be really overarching and really generalized because when it comes to the actual sort of improvements that need to be made, and we start talking about things like existing building code, building code, residential code, that's where the real sort of construction standards come into play. But the International Property Maintenance Code is somewhat intentionally designed to be thin in that respect, right? But how the International Property Maintenance Code is organized, there's a Chapter One, scope and administration. We'll go through a couple of the kind of chapters and verse here in just a little bit. Chapter Two, definitions. There's kind of an overarching general requirements. That's where you see some things like exterior property and exterior structures, interior, just general quality. Then they get sort of more granular, right? Chapter Four, light ventilation and occupancy. Chapter Five, plumbing fixtures. Six, mechanical fixtures. Seven, fire safety. And then there's a host of reference standards at the end. So I'm going to go through, I'm not going to go through sort of every single section. First and foremost, there are some overarching general amendments that we're going to propose, right? So first and foremost, we want to make sure that there's going to be a handful of amendments, right, that we're going to recommend just to maintain consistency with state law. Second is, so for example, there are references to the International Fire Code or to the International Mechanical Code or the Energy Code, right? And so you'll see amendments throughout that simply refer to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Building and Trade Code because that's where all of those code standards are adopted under that one overarching Unified Building and Trade Code. So I'm not going to go through all of those individual amendments. You'll see that when we bring back the ordinance. But specifically, Chapter One, obviously, we need to fill in the blanks, so to speak, right? So the name of jurisdiction, City of Wichita. Creation of an agency, well, the agency already exists, so we're just kind of kind of filling the blanks. The name of the department is more specifically Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, but M-A-B-C-D for purposes of this conversation. The official in charge is the code official. The duties and powers of the code official, again, just making sure that there's no conflict with Kansas Tort Claims Act. And then Section 106, the Means of Appeal. Every code standard has a means of appeal sort of process, right? We'll get into this a little bit more detail, but we already have that sort of body, right? The Board of Appeals is replaced with the Board of Code Standards and Appeals. That body already exists. So the first section amendment that we get to where we want to start asking for a little bit of policy guidance and direction, right, is on prosecution of a violation. So as it exists today, right, the current model, M-A-B-C-D, and more specifically neighborhood inspections and individuals within the Neighborhood Inspection Department. The way that the language was written in the existing codes and ordinances is to encourage exhausting all compliance options before issuing a UCC, a uniform. Criminal, thank you so much. And that's the citation that is sent to court that requires an individual appear in court, that they've exhausted all of their administrative remedies, and now they're referring them to the courts. Extensions may be granted. Homeowners working with the liaison, homeowners pull the permit, homeowner demonstrate progress. One of the challenges is, is that we get caught in this washing machine. More specifically, I'm going to show you an illustration of kind of the workflow, right? The second illustration, I'm going to show you a little bit of a workflow after a UCC is written, right? But environmental court follows a very similar compliance-driven model, right? We've gone down this path of we want to see compliance, and that hasn't changed, right? But we tend to spend more time trying to work with property owners and never actually getting beyond just continuing to try to work with property owners. So here's an example of the workflow sort of diagram, right, where a complaint's received, an inspector goes out. Is there a violation? Perhaps there is. If there is, there's a notice that is given and a cure period that is given. That inspector then returns as part of a reinspection. Has the property been, excuse me, has the violation been abated? If not, there's another notice that's provided. There's another cure period provided. There's another reinspection. And now you kind of begin to see, we never really get the violation abated, right? We stay in this, well, we're going to continue to work with the property owner. We're going to continue to work with the property owner. And it never gets to that UCC or an abatement order, right, that we just continue to work with the property owner to try to encourage them to abate the violations. Similarly, once a UCC is written, let's say it finally does get into the hands of sort of the court system. There's an arrangement, excuse me, an arraignment. Is the property owner present? If not, is there a plea deal? Is it dismissed? Maybe not. Eventually, maybe there is a hearing, right? Again, is the property owner present? If not, is there a plea deal? Is the case dismissed? Is there a continuance? And specifically, the language in the municipal code is intended to try and encourage working with property owners to the greatest extent possible. Never really, only, I think it was less than three percent of cases ever kind of go to trial, right? We just kind of get caught up in these wash cycles of continuing to try to work with property owners, continuing to try to work with property owners, right? And we never really get the violations abated. Okay, so there's a couple of options. So option one is that we could replace the environmental court with an administrative hearing, right? This is kind of the least assertive approach. In fact, it's probably less assertive than even where we are today, right? So one option is to replace environmental court with just an administrative hearing, and we hand this over to sort of an administrative hearing process. Option two is to modify the environmental court ordinance language. This is kind of the more assertive than where we are today approach, right? It repeals the court's compliance goal as codified by the charter ordinance, right? And really replaces it with a more, a more penalty sort of based approach when it comes to violations that make it to the courts, right? The hybrid model is a model whereby, once a UCC is written, right, that the prosecutor's office can decide whether or not to take a violation, a UCC, to an administrative hearing or whether maybe in the case of a repeat offender or a known violator, right, can send that UCC directly to the environmental court. So at this point in time, I'm going to pause for just a second before I get into the next one and really just kind of open it up for comments, suggestions, a little bit of policy direction. Again, I do have representatives from Law Department and representatives from Center for Public Management that were instrumental in helping getting us all here to where we are today. So if I'm unable to answer the questions, we have other folks here that might be able to answer those questions.
Thank you, Troy. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Troy. Also appreciate everyone's hard work on this. Long time coming. My question really is about option two and three. So I like option two, given everything that we've been hearing over the years. But on three, if I understand this correctly, it just provides more flexibility. So first-time offenders or those who like really are trying, get the opportunity to go down an easier path, while the repeat offenders or those who have some of the more grotesque offenses then could go down the like option two route. And that will be codified where they have the discretion to do so.
That's correct. Yep. Yeah, and I should kind of point out, right, that coming back to the internal process, right, because the codes and ordinance, even the International Property Maintenance Code, doesn't address this, right? This is really a policy, an internal policy and procedure approach, right? One of the things that we're going to talk about internally, right, as we overhaul our policies and procedures about how we sort of conduct inspections and reinspections, one of the things that we're going to try to do is kind of get rid of that extension scenario, right, that almost kind of like a three-strikes approach, right? That if there's an initial inspection, if there's a violation found, sort of strike one, here's an opportunity to abate. If I come back and sort of reinspect, then the violation is still not abated, sort of strike two. I'm going to give you one more chance, probably a reduced cure period, right? And if I come back that second time and you still haven't abated the violation, sort of issue that UCC. And then as a code enforcement officer, I can sort of move on to the next case and the next site, and I can put sort of that case in the hands of the prosecuting attorney's office, as well as the court system, to help kind of achieve some of the more desired outcomes. And that way, we don't get caught in these wash cycles. So even though there's not conversation around it, because there's nothing in the property maintenance code that really spells that out, that'll come back in the form of internal policies and procedures to the point that you just, yes, the idea is to get out of sort of the wash cycle again in the court system, right? That in the hybrid model, a prosecuting attorney for a first-time offender might be able to use the administrative hearing process. And again, for known repeat offenders, can immediately send them to environmental court.
I am supportive of the hybrid model if we can, and I can't remember which ordinance we did it on, if we can kind of put in writing what our wishes are as a full council. But I wouldn't want to start everyone at zero when we know we have repeat offenders already. And I would just hope that we could put some form of language that indicates we would like to see the folks who have been repeat offenders over the last several years pushed more to that option two rather than given the administrative piece because I think they have been finding every loophole they possibly could with what we have over the last several years. So if we could go hybrid and push the repeat offenders towards the more assertive model, I'd be supportive of option three.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. I'm glad we're back on this slide. What is the cost of both, option one, option two? I know one of the budget recommendations from the manager was eliminating one of our courtrooms. And so seeing the environmental court aspect with the administrative hearing, what is the most cost-effective solution? Is it pretty similar across the board as well?
So we haven't done sort of a deep dive into cost analysis without getting some sort of feedback from you all, right? Generally speaking, I mean, I can just tell you anecdotally, not having sort of environmental court, there's probably some cost savings there, right? But at the same time, you're going to have to have somebody to help sort of adjudicate in an administrative penalty. There may not be any jail time. There may not be any probation. There may not be any convictions, right? But you still have folks who are managing caseloads. So in that context, there's probably not going to be a lot of cost savings. This really probably is more procedural and process-driven. We'll be more than happy to kind of really dive in to better understand what the cost implications of these three models are. This is really more of just a question of how assertive, right? Do you want us to approach property maintenance and property maintenance violations?
I mean, especially with egregious offenders, I want us to be very assertive. There are people that take advantage of the system. But I also, if one of these options is ten times more expensive than one option, that will matter when it comes forward. So I'd be interested in performing on what each one of these would cost. In addition, would these be for all cases? I know we talked a lot about tenant-landlord relationships. Would this be for all cases? So that it's a owner-occupied home or a tenant-occupied home? Would both also be under the prosecution of violation or the same category?
Yes, so while this is Chapter One of the International Property Maintenance Code, you'll see as we kind of get down into, right, yes, any violation would be handled sort of the same way, right? There's an inspection. There's a determination as to whether or not there's a violation. There's an inspection, there's a determination as to whether or not there's a violation, and then we go through the process, right? And so, whether it's a commercial property, whether it's a residential property, whether it's an interior structure, if it's an exterior property, whether it's an owner-occupied, whether it's a landlord-tenant, right? We approach it all from the same lens of a property maintenance violation as a property maintenance violation.
I too would probably be more interested in the hybrid model of how we balance, you know, an individual, 90-year-old woman living in the district that's trying to get in compliance, and may not have the funds to get in compliance. It's very different to me than someone that has 10 violations and is just working the system.
Right.
So, I want to make sure that there's room for both of those in whatever we propose moving forward as well. And then, a question about a previous slide that you had, you don't have to go to it. But how often do we send out these inspectors? How often does that loop happen? And how often, what is the average they might go out to one particular property?
So, we did a little bit of an analysis. There are some cases, there are some case types, for example, high weeds and grass, right? Where that follows one process, right? We go out, we inspect, high weeds and grass, perhaps provide the notice, come back, nope, it wasn't, and we immediately go to abatement, right? That's just been sort of the culture that's created, right? There are other violations that continue to become harder and harder. A hole in a roof, right? Mold and mildew in an apartment unit, right? There's some processes that have just continued to try to run through the cycle. Some are addressed more easily, right? We're trying to kind of more generalize that a violation's a violation, that a violation, and really trying to streamline regardless of case type. If that makes any sense.
Yeah. I want to see more data on all three options, but if I had to lean towards any of the options two or option three.
Thank you.
Before I move on, I just have a follow-up question. When we're looking at that performa, it would be beneficial to know what's the actual cost of a call that is sent out? So, a code enforcer going out to a property, what is that actual cost? So, when you're looking for the average number of times per property, I'd also like to see what's the actual cost of sending an individual out, the gas that it takes to take that person there, just, again, the full cost. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Troy, for your work on this, and everybody who's been doing work on this, including legal and housing and MABCD. I support option three as well. I agree with Councilmember Johnson if the policy can be skewed more towards, you know, leniency and trying to work to get people in compliance where people who first time are very, you know, uncommon that they get any violations, but especially cracking down on those landlords. So, I do have one or two questions. Are we able to also separate this dependent on the number of doors that people have? Because one of the things we see is people who have 10 doors or less, usually, they take better care of their property. I mean, a violation is a violation, but it does seem like, we don't want to be too overbearing on some. But then the ones who have more units, bigger units, multifamily units, it seems like they do get more than their fair share of violations. So, is that possible, or is that a discriminatory practice there?
So, this approach, right, focuses on sort of a blind approach, right? But in the context of identifying the violation and getting that particular violation abated, right? That regardless of the property owner, that the code enforcement officer is focused on the complaint that was received, right? That I want to continue to make sure that we're communicating well, that we are still basing this entire process on complaints, right? That this is a complaint-driven process. Code enforcement officers do not initiate inspections, right? They don't take it upon themselves to go out. This isn't entirely a complaint-driven model, right? So, when a complaint comes in, that code enforcement officer is specifically focused on that property, that moment, that violation, and abating that violation. Where I think what you're describing comes into the conversation, right, is kind of where the prosecutor's office and the courts begin to sort of, if I'm seeing the same individual over and over and over again, right, I'm going to probably become a little more assertive in fines, penalties, and the tools that I have in that toolbox for sort of known repeat violators. So, from a code enforcement officer's perspective, they're simply going out to the property, and they're looking at, now, I'd be remiss if I said there's, as they do property owner research, right, code enforcement officers are going to probably become familiar with repeat violators just as well as sort of the prosecutors and the courts, right? But the emphasis on the training is to focus on the property, focus on the violation, and getting that particular violation abated, and that there's not a discriminatory practice of the code enforcement officer in trying to get the violations abated. I have a slide later on in the presentation that'll talk about some of the other things that have come up in conversation, right? And what we've tried to do is separate those from actually sort of what is the property maintenance code, and what is the property maintenance process. There's some ancillary conversations around sort of repeat violators and those things that we can address outside of the context of this, right? We really tried to keep this focused on property maintenance, property maintenance codes, and the process associated with that.
Would the owners of the property be, would that be taken into consideration more the owners of the property, or how about some of the property managers as well? Because there's a lot of property owners that we know live out of state, and it's extremely difficult to get a hold of them. So, how does that figure into our process, whether or not we would go through administrative hearing or environmental court? And also, does that, does the complaints follow the property management groups as well?
So, the way the property maintenance code is structured, and probably more so for our, just as much so for our municipal, we're going to focus on the property owner, right? That's who owns the property, that's who's responsible for the property and the upkeep of the property, right? If a property management group is not representing the property owner well, at the end of the day, the rights and responsibilities lie on the property owner. That's who we're going to focus on when we issue notices, when we issue UCCs, right? It's going to be against the property owner. Now, we can work with property management groups, right? Who might have the authorities that are given to them to provide access, to try and remediate, vacate, or abate the violation, right? But at the end of the day, the way the property maintenance codes are structured, it's focused on the property owner.
Okay, last question real quick. There's a lot of properties out there to where one of the loopholes that they get by on this is once they start getting violations, and then they put it into somebody else's name in sort of a rent-to-own process. Would these complaints also stick with the property if it does go through sale? Are we still able to follow up on that if they exploit that particular loophole?
I'm going to say that, again, I'm not an attorney, but once a violation is issued and a UCC is issued, and we're going through the process, right? If all of a sudden the property changes hands, the court may very well dismiss the case, right? That that property owner is no longer responsible for that violation. If that's the case, fine, so be it, right? We might have to kind of start over, but given a complaint-driven process, we can go out the very next day, and if there's a complaint, then we can kind of start the process all over again against the new property owner, right? If we also, right, reduce the number of times that we're re-inspecting and revisiting a property, and we can get it into the court system, into the prosecutor's offices, into the court system faster, the more likely we're going to be able to eventually sort of connect with those property owners. Just in the context of just trying to change hands, we can probably go through a process of getting a UCC and a violation issued before a new LLC can be created and a conveyance can be created. So, the idea is to try to cut down the time that we're re-inspecting as much as possible where we have known violations that are not being cured.
Okay, yeah, that would be something I'd be interested in seeing in the code, and as far as the administrative process goes, is making sure that that's noted, that if we pick up on that, I know that is an issue with MABCD. There's a number of properties in my district where that keeps happening. So, if that's able to be included in the process as well, just making note, and seeing where the violation goes from person to person. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Troy. Appreciate the presentation. I see my friend Denise Peters in the back from the Center for Project Management, so thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it. If, I think we're trying to all find the balance between making sure that renters have a safe place to live, right? But then also making sure that property owners are also respected. If you mentioned this, I'm sorry, and I didn't see it anywhere in the green sheet, do we know about how many cases a year this would be? Guestimate?
So, that's a little bit nuanced, right?
Because it could be unique encounters or not, right?
Right. There's a slide I have here later on, right, when we get to performance measures. There's sort of three tranches of measures that we really want to retool and revisit, right? One is the complaint process, right? How many complaints are we receiving? How many of those complaints are valid complaints, right? I mean, that's a, that's a performance measure sort of metric in and of itself. The second is, if there is a violation found, there's a case that's created, how long is that case being inspected before it's sent to the, and then there's the third part of that, just how long are cases being, how long are they existing in sort of the court process, right? So, we're going to go through that. I don't have the exact numbers of historical measures, right? But it's a little bit nuanced, and we don't know how many complaints have, because when we were looking at the process, there were so many different ways that complaints could have been lodged, that we just didn't have a really good measure. We're going to try to find a better sort of funnel to know how many complaints are received, how many were valid, how many were not. And I think that's also going to be a better indicator, too, of actual case creation and case management. Denise might have some of those numbers off the top of her head, but...
It's okay. We'll be having more discussions about this. I was just curious, but, you know, the one thing is if, and I know you're kind of looking for a little bit of guidance, I also am leaning towards the hybrid model, too. And I would hope the goal would be, and it's been mentioned by the mayor and by Councilmember Glasscock, that, you know, it costs money for MABCD to go out and do these inspections. And if renters know that we are serious and that we're changing our process, then perhaps that will make them be a little bit more diligent. And if they're more diligent, it means they're taking better care of their property. And if they're taking better care of their property, we don't have to spend the funds sending out somebody from MABCD to do the inspection. So, the other thing I like about this is this is kind of an opportunity maybe for, I'm using this word, and it may not be the right word, but a reset. And then we can also get baseline data to know if the changes that we're making are actually making a difference, because the goal should be less visits from MABCD.
Right.
And less complaints from tenants.
And if I were to even kind of put myself in the ballpark of your original question, we're talking thousands, right? Thousands of sort of complaints and inspections and cases that are kind of being managed on an annual basis.
And for the MABCD inspector, it's not just, you know, it's the time that they take that they have to go out and visit, it's the gas that they take, but then they have to come back and do their reporting, and they have to do the follow-up. And so, anything that we can do to get renters to be better renters saves the city money in the end. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Troy, for the presentation. Like some of my colleagues have mentioned, I'm leaning more towards three, just because it gives us more choices. But I would say compliance is always a good goal for the most part, but we've seen in all of our districts, there's just some people that just can't get to the compliance. And they have found every loophole, or moved their car over here, you know, to reset the clock, or all of that. So, I'm really interested to fine-tune some of those details for the repeat habitual offenders that we're continually having to deal with, that are burning up resources that just aren't complying. So, I'm leaning more towards option three. But my other question is, have we created a manual for the inspectors to all be playing, like a handbook to make sure the inspectors are all playing by the same book of rules? If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Kind of a leading question into some of our late, right? I want to make sure I don't misrepresent this as well. Simply adopting the International Property Maintenance Code isn't going to make all of this go away, right? What it does is it, it changes the culture, right? It gives us an opportunity to look at property maintenance and property maintenance codes from a different lens, right? From that, from that industry standard sort of best practice lens. It's all in one easy-to-use, easy-reference manual, there's all of the reasons we've already described, right? But this is just the first step. The next couple of steps, right, are exactly what you're describing. Once we know and understand what direction we're going with the codes and ordinances, over the next six, nine months, right, our goal is to overhaul and create one easy-to-use, standard operating procedure that gives code enforcement officers step-by-step instructions on how to address every single violation. So, yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Troy. Appreciate the information. Tell me a little bit more about modifying the environmental court?
Yep.
What that entails, repeal the court's compliance goals? What's all that mean? Does it make it more tougher?
So, there's a section of the municipal code that addressed environmental court and property maintenance violations, right? And it's specifically spelled out in that section that provides guidance and direction to the judges, right? That it's the city's intent and desire that we want judges to work with property owners to continue to try and achieve compliance without sort of conviction, right? So, one of the things that we would do as part of this is we would go to that municipal code section, and we would amend that municipal code section to give the judges and the courts better guidance and direction as to what sort of the new desires of the governing body and the city are. That while, yes, we all agree that the end goal, we want compliance, right? So, the way that the codes and ordinances are written, we're doing exactly what the codes and ordinances were designed to do, right? I think what has been made apparent over the last several years is we're still not, as a result of that, we're not achieving some of the desired outcomes that I think that the community is wanting and expecting. And so, that's why we've got to go back. This is a, this is sort of a structural reconstruction of the court system. Again, I've got some folks here that I keep looking over my shoulder, Jennifer, I know Dante's heavily involved, if anybody else wants to chime in, but that's my 100,000-foot perspective of the environmental courts were specifically designed to continue to try to create compliance opportunities without any sort of convictions.
I hear you're saying that it would then?
Yes.
Do that, so?
Yes.
That would be good. I'd be very much for that. And I would also embrace the hybrid model. Because the repeat offenders, we need to get tougher on them. People who just happen to be out of compliance once, they can easily fix it. I think that's good.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Troy, just one follow-up from what Councilmember Hoheisel asked about the owners. And if this is a later slide, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Is there a way we can ensure that there is a clause that might recognize some of the same principles on the business or same entities behind LLCs that own multiple properties and violation, just to make sure we are catching repeat offenders? So, if someone gets written up, and then they start an LLC that still manages property, just making sure... So if someone gets written up and then they start an LLC that still manages property, just making sure we can find a way to keep track of that.
So not generally addressed in property maintenance, property maintenance codes. You write that, kind of building off councilmember Hoheisel's comments, right? That, that once we establish sort of a foundation of how we conduct day-to-day business, right? There are other codes and ordinances that we can kind of bolt on to what we're doing at, whether it be the prosecutor's office or whether it's the courts, right? To kind of gain the goals and objectives of the governing body and the city. But generally speaking, those kind of things are not inclusive of property maintenance, property maintenance code. Property is specifically geared towards that's a violation and it needs to be abated.
Okay. Thank you. I'll keep my notes on that.
Troy, I do have a couple of questions. This is less on tenant landlord type of questions, but it also has to do with the process. I've been getting emails from individuals south of Broadway that have seen multiple violations on the illegal camping ordinance. And so one of the things that was pointed out, this individual said, "I cannot express strongly enough how vitally important swift enforcement of the anti-camping ordinance on private property is." The ordinance specifically states, quote, "It is unlawful for a person to camp or temporary camp on private property without authorization of the owner or occupant. Such person may be removed along with their personal property immediately without prior notice." And this person asks that we respectfully enforce that law because they have, they went through the M A B C D process, I guess, multiple, multiple times. And they were able to clean up this property. And then within five days, another one popped up in that neighborhood. And I know that especially in the Sosi neighborhood, they're trying to really revitalize that area. So my question is, does this apply to this specific situation? I know that this individual has been emailing me about how this process can be expedited and how multiple violations can stop, especially in properties where, or in neighborhoods that have been reporting this for many, many times.
Right. So property maintenance codes are about the quality of the site, the property and the structures, right? The use of a property, whether it be sort of a zoning use or whether it be camping, right? The use of a property is not addressed in property maintenance codes. But property maintenance codes have a, a direct impact on how properties are used, right? So properties that are well-managed, well-maintained, well-groomed, well-kept, right? Are often not associated with sort of adverse uses. But just to make sure that we're separating the two, no, property maintenance codes are not necessarily associated with uses. Those are zoning codes, those are zoning violations, or specific ordinances that the city adopts like camping ordinances, right? This is more about the quality of the site and the structures and how well the property is being maintained.
But if it's a nuisance case, isn't that an M A B C D situation?
So a nuisance, yes, there, there's a little bit of overlap here and I want to make sure that, right? Some of the violations that are identified in a property maintenance code are generally construed to be a nuisance, right? For example, high weeds and grass is oftentimes referred to as a nuisance, right? Under state statute, nuisances, identifying violations as nuisances allow governing bodies, jurisdictions to abate, right? There might be, in other cases, violations which may not necessarily be construed to be a nuisance per se, right? Broadly, property maintenance codes are loosely referred to as nuisances, yes, right? But again, it's really more about how well a property is being maintained, how well the buildings and structures are being maintained, and not necessarily how those properties are being used either lawfully or unlawfully by occupants.
Mayor, if I can, based on your ordinance, I've got a process here in front of me. I'm going to ask the city attorney to either clarify or confirm what I have here. So when we receive notification of a, an encampment on private property, we then have to give proper notice to the party. And then an administrative search warrant may be issued. And then if it's not, as a result of that warrant, then we move forward with bid solicitation and an award for the abatement of the encampment. So in other words, the removal of the encampment. And that is done, I believe, privately, not by our crews, not by our city crews. That's my recollection. And then it will be placed in the queue for nuisance abatements. And sometimes we'll have a little bit of a delay because this one day that I asked, they had 31 properties that were in the abatement queue. So it takes a little while to work through the abatements. And Jennifer, you may want to talk also about why we use private contractors and the special assessment process.
Well, I think, you know, a key thing is that it's bypassing a prosecution, it's going right to abatement to have a quicker fix. And I think we can be more nimble with private contractors and that's what the process entails as far as the differences. Again, we're going right to abatement in those situations.
Thank you. I will send that follow-up to the city manager. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just kind of curious, was that question kind of directed at the property owners? That if there's camping going on at the property, that it'd be through the hybrid model? Or I'm just kind of curious where that... Or are you considering the, the people living in the encampment as not following health codes or...
It's really the property owner. I was curious because this resident is in your district and she is, she's asking about these specific situations where, again, she's trying to revitalize her neighborhood. And I didn't know if this process would also apply to her situation.
Yeah, she has a number of vacant lots, actually, where the encampments pop up. And M A B C D tries to get out there and rectify that on a relatively quick basis, as quick as they can. So I am in contact with the resident and we understand the process and we're working hand-in-hand and trying to address it. Thank you.
She wants to expedite that process. So I'm just curi-, that's why, since we're having this discussion, how we can help that resident and residents in that area, because it is not necessarily vacant lots that she's specifically talking about. She's talking about properties that are owned by someone, but there's been repeat situations.
Right, yeah. There, and, and again, I'm not sure that that ties in here, but yeah. She and I are on good terms and we, we do communicate regularly. And again, we're working through that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoheisel. We'll continue with the presentation.
So thank you for that feedback. That helps, gives us some guidance and direction on how to craft some of the language in the ordinance amendments. Okay, so the next one, for a little bit of a policy discussion, right? And I think this is the last one, so the rest of it should go fairly quickly. But big conversation, policy directive, demolitions, right? So there are a number of structures that eventually become unsafe. In fact, that's specifically kind of the term that you utilize, unsafe structure, right? That we ultimately get to abatement of demolition of unsafe structures, right? There, there's a board-up section, but really this is kind of that next, that how do we handle demolitions? So currently, city codes mandate that city council approves all definition, all demolitions, right? That comes out of Wichita Municipal Code, Section 1816050. Alternatively, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm simply kind of presenting the alternatives. The International Property Maintenance Code lays out a process by which the code official causes a structure to be demolished and removed, right? So there's pros and cons to both approaches. In fact, there might be a little bit of a hybrid model here as well, where appeals of the code official's determination to placard a structure and order its demolition abatement, right? An appeal could be made or heard by, rather than city council, the Board of Coders, the Board of Code Standards and Appeals, rather than city council. Again, there's pros and cons to any one of these approaches. I can tell you, I can answer questions as to perhaps maybe why the International Property Maintenance Code uses the code official and not the governing body. But at the same time, I also know and understand kind of the history of Wichita and wanting city council to be able to weigh in on whether or not a, a structure is demolished. And so we're simply looking for, again, a little bit of policy guidance and direction on how to make amendments to sections around demolition and the process of ordering demolitions.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I actually appreciate council approval for that just because of some of the situations. It allows us to weigh current taxes, ability to come forward, make something happen. It also gives us a chance sometimes to just give one extension and then have staff do the rest of the process. But I think it's good if we hear that, or I'm speaking for myself in District 1 in the core, some of the homes that I've seen. We've only had a few success opportunities, but giving us families a chance. I thought it was good that it came to the council and allowed us to debate and then do that. So I would rather see it come to the council personally.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thanks, Mayor. We're duly elected by the citizens and I think the final authority of any demolition should reside with the council. We should make that determination.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. It's, you know, people's property rights and sometimes it's their home that, that we're talking about there. And the box, buck stops up here, so we have that responsibility and we need to take it seriously.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. Troy, would it, would it be more enforcement with the second option there? If, if the official could just do it and then maybe take it to Board of Codes or Appeals Process? Maybe better enforcement or not? Quicker?
Here, here's probably the arguments kind of for and against, right, just a little. All of this is predicated on budgets, right? If, if the city is abating a structure, if the city is demolishing a structure, right? There's, there's got to be funds to do that, right? Paying a contractor to do that. So we're somewhat limited in, in the number of buildings that can be abated just purely out of numbers, right? In the context of perhaps why it might reside with a code official or with a building board of, is purely a liability conversation, right? Where the longer unsafe building and structure remains, right? The more exposure the city and others come to, to liability, right? If, if all of a sudden somebody's in a building that was intended for demolition and it collapses, right? I mean, God forbid something like that happened, right? By, by sort of stretching out that timeline, there's a liability conversation that kind of comes into the... And that's why some communities have, the code official is the code official because of their skills, knowledge, education, experience, certification, qualification, all of those kind of things, right? Same with the building board of appeals, right? The folks who sit on building a board of appeals are folks who are trained and experienced and oftentimes in the fields of, of construction and mechanical, electrical and plumbing and those kind of things, right? They, they deal in those spaces all day, every day. There are some communities that, that have chosen to put those decisions and the discretion of whether or not a building should be, that it's unsafe and that needs to be demoed, in, in the hands of sort of those professionals. But at the other side, we've seen some cases where, right? A, a building was deemed to be unsafe and, and through a process of coming before a governing body, right? A, a structure was salvaged, right? And so I, I can see both sides of this story and I can see both sides of the argument. And that's why we're simply asking that of the governing body here today of kind of some policy, because I can see this going either way.
So what I'm hearing is saying is the top option, coming everything to city council, generally takes longer.
Yes. Mayor, if I, if I could, just some history. Over the last 16 years, I can say that coming to the council has delayed demolitions on a pretty consistent basis. Not probably as much in the last 18 months as the years before that. I do think there's parallels between this and the discussion you just previously had, because staff takes it very seriously when you're talking about demolition. And so you can imagine how much work our staff is doing with a property owner to get to the point, to try to get compliance. So by the time it reaches the council, they've been through, I don't know, it could be a year or more of, of attempts to try to get the problems abated, to get the property stabilized. So by the time it gets to the council, it's been through a lot, it's in pretty bad condition. It was not uncommon for the council for a number of years to give a significant number of extensions to property owners that are just trying to make some kind of minimal effort. And many of them had financial concerns, things that the staff took into account to bring it to the council. But the council, there, it was not uncommon to see extensions that went beyond a year, which had then, and then didn't result in any kind of favorable rehabilitation of the property. And so ultimately was, were demolished. But that property then stood in bad condition for over a year and probably two years if you take in the staff time that we worked it before. So I think that's the reason we're, we're bringing this to you is if, I, I understand the council's concern about when you get to the point of demolition, you know, that, that's an, an important decision that has to be made. But it, it can extend a process for a long period of time, causing some negative impact on the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. So I, I hear, what I hear is it's a delaying tactic and it keeps the neighborhood looking bad, maybe for another year. We, we delegate a lot of decisions to staff. I think this is one that we, we could delegate. There is an appeals process by, by a group of peers that are, that know what the rules are and things. So I, I would, personally, I would be for the second one. Just expedite the process and make it a little faster and get these neighborhoods cleaned up quicker.
If I could ask a question of city attorney and also of Troy. Is it possible that we could modify it to the board, to the council being the appeal instead of the Board of Code Standards and Appeals?
That's the way it exists today. Yes, that's the first option.
No, instead of the board, you just have to go to a committee council.
So in other words, the code official would cause the structure and if someone wants to appeal it to the council, they could appeal.
I don't know that there's any restriction in state law, but I need to check. I think it could be made the way you suggested. I'd like to confirm that.
Yeah, we can look at an approach.
Just offer that as another alternative. And that would still have the council have ultimate authority if someone feels they were treated unfairly in the process by staff.
Even if we put a committee together, maybe it could act quicker? Three, maybe.
How many are on the current Board of Code Standards and Appeals?
I want to say seven, but I don't, I don't know for certain, but I want to say there's seven members on that board.
And these are all professionals, correct?
Yeah.
So experts in their field.
There are requirements that in order... There are requirements that in order to serve on the building board of appeals, you have to, you have to meet certain criteria. You have to fill such a certain slot, yes.
I'd like to see more numbers, so more data first and foremost, before even making a decision on that. Finding out more information. I feel like we don't have concrete numbers of cases that, and true length of time for this abatement or the final determination being demolition. Because I know I've heard from some neighbors that obviously it was in a fire, it is a structurally unsafe building. And so in situations like that, we've had individuals have come up to us and said, this is that, not only is it an eyesore, it's a safety concern. So how do we balance when it truly is a safety concern, not just an eyesore?
Right. There are some authorities that are given the code official, right, in those cases, right? And in the city, for all intents and purposes, right, to secure a property, right? We secure properties all the time. There's a boarding up process, right, where if a building has become damaged by fire, right, we can take emergency measures to secure the property to avoid folks kind of getting into the, to the building, right? But the demolition process does have to go through a little bit of a process, simply because it is an abatement of a violation and there's certain implications associated with it. But we can get you kind of some side-by-side comparisons of maybe what these two look like.
Not only that, but I'd like numbers of how many demolitions have occurred, say, over the last ten years, and what that length of time that actually took from complaint to actual demolition. Because I think we need a little bit more information on this before I would make a decision. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Before I actually give my comments, I think it might be better to look at when we reformed our policy versus before, because once we started putting more in condemnation, things changed and sped up, and that's not a real comparison to what we were doing before. I think that was 2021 when we started that, so just some context to what she just said. I just, I wondered to Bob, I think we actually talked about that. Do you feel it would be the same amount of time if we just changed what you said and changed the Board of Code Standards and Appeals to the city council for appeals? Because if the staff made a determination that something should be demolished and then that person appeals it, it would still come to council? Would it take longer then, as an appeal, to come to council than just coming to us originally?
Again, that's kind of where we'll have to, let us get you some, some numbers on perhaps what that process has looked like over the last several years. And then that way we can maybe get a little bit of more refined guidance and direction on, you know, maybe there are certain types, right, that need to come to you versus, you know, a property that is not able to be occupied, right? It was in a fire, doesn't have a roof, doesn't have four walls, or something like that, right? Let us try to kind of fine tune better a little bit of kind of the history of where we've been and maybe a couple of options to move forward. I feel as though, we've gotten some pretty good feedback here. I don't want to belabor this kind of all evening, right? But I think we've gotten a little bit of feedback on kind of some of the feedback from you all on that there might be an appetite to go to a faster process in certain cases, right? And in other cases, providing city council with some discretion.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, I just want to go on the record saying I think it's important that we still, it still comes before us, before that final decision is made.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I also like what Councilmember Johnson has done recently to where he'll close it out and appeal within ninety days if progress isn't seen. I definitely think that could be a part of the process as well to speed it up. One of the things we do see is whenever we do give people three, four times to get into compliance and they don't. So I do think that might be a part of the consideration. Also, just for context, sometimes when it comes before us, we can actually help find a solution. I remember first couple of months on council, Councilmember Ballard actually helped save the home of a disabled vet who had been trying to find some resources to improve it. So that's, that's another thing just to keep in mind for other council members as well is sometimes we're able to help move the project along in some circumstances.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I also echo the need for more data, making the decision. There's no hard information. I know we're not in a workshop setting, so that was probably part of it. And then the last question I have is what type of delay are we talking about? We meet every week. And so how long are we talking about delay when we're regularly meeting every single week? Are we talking about a month delay? I still understand the delay of it coming before council more than, a lot of these boards and committees and commissions don't meet but once a month or once every other month.
I think the delay that I think you've heard tonight is that there's a case that comes to city council and there's a plea by the owner, right, for more time.
So it's only if city council is voting for more. It's not a delay in the process. It's only a vote of this body that is pushing the delay forward.
Right. And that's where we've just, we've historically seen sort of continuances, right, provided by city, and that's fine, right?
That takes a majority vote, correct?
Correct.
While we're on that topic, I do want to make mention, for anyone who's here in city council chambers or watching online, there are vacancies on this specific board that we're talking about, the Board of Code Standards and Appeals. But you have to be a specialist in that area. So in other words, there are currently three vacancies. We're looking for an architect, we're looking for a structural engineer, we're looking for a Class C contractor, and then someone has an expired term that's a Class A contractor. So if you or anyone you know are these specific fields, we're always looking for individuals to serve as volunteers on these boards. And you can always find that information at wichita.gov, just click on Government, Boards and Committees.
Thank you for that. Okay. I promise the rest of this should go really, really fast at this point in time. Okay. So kind of getting out of chapter one, getting into chapter two, the definitions section, we'll adopt the International Property Maintenance Code definitions, and then we'll bring over some, some additional definitions from those various titles that we've seen success with in the past. So next chapter, chapter three, general requirements. Under the swimming pool section, we'll make sure that it also complies with Wichita municipal code section seven point seven two. Under three oh four point three, premises identification, there's a little bit of a nuance here, we'll just call it out. Address numbers shall comply with the provision of Wichita municipal code section ten oh four one nine zero. The differentiation is, property maintenance code says that the identification numbers have to be four inch. Our city codes and ordinances require at least three inches. I mean, you can have larger, but address identification, the individual numbers have to be at least three inches tall versus what, we just wanted to be consistent and not have conflicts within our own codes and ordinances. On section three oh four point one four, insect screens, there's a whole thing where you got to fill in the blanks. We've simply amended it to insect screens are required from April first to November thirtieth. Section three oh seven, handrails and guards, we're going to amend some of the height requirements, again, to be consistent with other codes and ordinances. Under chapter four, bathrooms and toilet rooms, there's a ventilation, there's a light ventilation requirement or an allowance that in lieu of a window in bathrooms and water closets, an openable skylight approved by the code official may be added. Again, that's just being consistent with some of our other codes and ordinances we've already adopted. Chapter five, plumbing facilities, five oh six three, grease interceptors will comply with Wichita municipal code sixteen point two four. Storm drainage, properties must comply with storm management, water, Wichita municipal code sixteen point three two. Couple amendments in chapter six, heating facilities. There's a, the way the language is written is usually that a property has to provide heat from a certain date of a year to a certain date of a year. We've simply amended maintaining heating facility requirement. We're going to delete the exception and in all areas where the average monthly temperature is above thirty degrees, a minimum temperature of sixty-five degrees Fahrenheit shall be maintained. Heat supply, maintaining requirements to furnish heat, just sort of generally removing the date ranges for minimum temperature and removed exceptions.
Councilmember, Councilmember Johnson.
Yep.
Thanks, Mayor. I was going to let you finish that, but is there any way to add in air conditioning to that?
So we went back and forth on that, right? The way the property maintenance code is written, there's not a requirement for sort of air cooling, I'll say cooling rather than sort of air conditioning. Part of the reason why is sort of the light ventilation requirement is to provide for sort of cooling, right, in warmer weathers. Every code section that has a heating, you must provide heat. But the way the property maintenance code, there's not a section that talks about, we can add one, we can add one, if that's the desire of the governing body. Most, most communities, most property maintenance codes don't address whether or not a building must be cooled, right? But we can certainly add one if that's the desire of the governing body.
I would like, my support is for that. I'd love to have a longer conversation. I've met with people over the years who had shown documentation of letting their property manager know that air conditioning was out and it took three weeks to fix on days that we were over a hundred degrees, so it was ninety-eight some odd degrees in their apartment, even visited one of those spaces. And then, of course, by law, they're required to pay rent, you know, and they can't live in that space or they have young kids. So even opening the window isn't enough. So I think that, and I would love to have a discussion and hopefully include something like that as this comes back before the body.
So just continuing to build on that, right? Equipment, the requirements in the mechanical section, right, is that if there is equipment, equipment must be maintained in accordance with the manufacturer's specification, right? That if I have equipment, if I have an HVAC unit, then the property owner is responsible to assure that that unit is operating in good standing, right? There's some older buildings that don't have cooling equipment, right? And that's why the property maintenance code doesn't address cooling, right? Even so, for example, if you think back to early nineteen hundred type of structures, right, they might have had a wood burning stove, right? And that wood burning stove could satisfy sort of the requirement for heating, but there was no sort of cooling equipment in early nineteen hundred structures, right? So there's a long history around that. So if there's equipment, then it must be, must be in good operating order. And so if you look at some of the mechanical and electrical codes, they don't really talk about things like requiring it, but if you do put in cooling equipment, cooling equipment must be maintained in accordance with the manufacturer's specification. So, but let us look at that and let us see if perhaps some other communities have addressed things like adding language to accommodate cooling.
Well, I appreciate that. So let me revise what I said. I think the equipment, if there, should work because if I'm paying you rent, I'm expecting that what you have on site does work. But I also know that some of our codes have been, if significant renovations happen in certain spaces, so maybe they don't have that equipment. If certain renovations happen, maybe that then becomes a requirement to add into that to make sure that we continue to provide the best quality living space to Wichitaans as possible.
Okay. Six oh two four, occupiable workspaces, maintain requirements to furnish heat, again, removing date ranges for minimum temperatures. Chapter seven, again, you might recall some of our general amendments, otherwise there were no amendments to chapter seven. Okay, so next step. So at this point in time, the kind of timeline schedule is we're going to continue to make the final modifications to the codes and ordinances. We anticipate, again, if it's the desire of the governing body, to take those codes and ordinances and kind of this presentation out to the dabs over the course of June and July, with the intent of returning to city council, July, August, with an actual ordinance, ordinance amendment. And in the meantime, our goal is that in the background, across the next six months, talking about things like policies and procedures, there's things that we're going to need to do with our software systems of recoding, courts benchmark, have to do some sort of recoding. We want to try to put all of that in place with the intent of trying to go live with the new codes and ordinances. Effective date, January one, twenty twenty-six. Here's my big asterisk disclaimer, right, that assuming all system changes can be made within the timeline, we're working with those vendors as we speak to identify what the timelines costs might be to overhaul some of those systems, right? Whether we can do them internally, whether they take sort of vendor work. But so, assuming all those system changes could be made within the timeline, the intent is to kind of go live January one, twenty twenty-six. Additionally, again, we'll have all those drafted, those policies and procedures drafted, finalized, trained on by December thirty-first for that January one go-live date. And then as part of the process, we also want to start working on some of those performance measures, those KPIs around complaints, the actual case, case management, and then what's going on in the court so we can better kind of isolate and determine where there's ongoing opportunities for improvement. Okay, so here's kind of the one last slide, and this speaks to a little bit of the conversation that we've had throughout this of, here are some other general policy considerations that have been introduced over the last couple of years that are on the periphery of housing quality and property maintenance, but aren't necessarily addressed in property maintenance, property maintenance codes. Things like income discrimination, things like a rental registry or rental licensing, things like landlord watch lists, certified preferred landlord lists, a requirement perhaps for a local property manager or additional penalties for repeat offenders. Again, those are not generally policy conversations that are embedded within the property maintenance code. We'd be more than happy to explore any of those sort of in addition to this conversation, but we just, we wanted to recognize that these were some ideas that have come out of conversations over the last couple of years, but we're not being dismissive of them. We're just trying to separate the conversation, these are not sort of property maintenance code conversations. These are things that deal with landlord-tenant relationships. These things deal with things like repeat offenders and how we address repeat offenders, those kind of things, but not necessarily property maintenance codes per se. So with that being said, it's recommended the city council receive and file the presentation. Otherwise, again, I'll stand for questions. We have representatives from CPM still here and Law Department will stand for questions.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we go back to slide sixty-six? Yeah, I support ongoing conversations on all of these. Now, I know that there are some concern that some of these are potentially banned by the state with the Tenant-Landlord Act. Can you point to any of these in particular? Do you see any conflicts with the state on this or the IPMC in general?
So we are, I can answer the question around the IPMC, right? We're doing an exhaustive, we're going to assure that there's nothing in the International Property Maintenance Code that we recommend adopting that is going to be in conflict with any state law. Man, I'd get into some trouble if I started speculating on some of this other stuff, whether or not they're in violation of any of the statutes, of the Kansas statutes. I defer to the Law Department on that one.
Thanks, Troy. I mean, they're not specifically directly in conflict, I think, it's fair to say.
You didn't sleep in a Holiday Inn last night?
Like I said, I like to plage you- Like I said, I like to play junior attorney, but I know where
That is with the, I will correct, the income discrimination, we need to look at that one.
Say that again.
Would need to look further, the income discrimination bullet point.
Okay, also, yeah, a couple of other questions. Do you have a list of the staff recommendations for adding to this? Will that be part of the future presentation, or is that still being looked at right now currently?
So, this list is by no way exhaustive, right?
I meant more in general, not particular to those lists.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's other policy conversations that I think we should have over the next several months and years, right, to continue to improve the quality of housing, the quality of our, of living in our community. Again, we just, I brought this slide out here just to make sure that you, we hear you, we're not being dismissive, it's just not a property maintenance code conversation. And so we're trying to separate that out and just focus on the property maintenance process and try to address that first and foremost, because a lot of this stuff builds on and plays off of property maintenance.
Is there anything, does this help make inspections more available, or does it make it to where inspections are quicker, or is that again, something that kind of our hands are tied by the state regulations?
So I'll answer that maybe in two ways, just because I could see that question going a couple of different ways. Number one, inherently, by spending less time on any one given property, right, we're going to get to more properties and more violations with sort of the same amount of staff, right? I mean, that's just sort of math, right? But this doesn't overstep the court's administrative search warrant process, right? That's a process in and of itself. If we want, need, gain access, entrance to, we still have to go through the administrative search warrant process, right? We have to build a case, we have to go demonstrate, we have to go convince a judge to give us an administrative search warrant, right? That's not going to change. That process still exists. This doesn't circumvent that process, right? But inherently, the goal is if we're spending sort of less time working on one individual, we'll be able to get to more properties and hopefully address more property violations.
Okay, I appreciate that. Last question. One of the concerns, talking to some landlords, especially in regards to some Section Eight issues, I think, because that's where most of them do have inspections, is getting consistency across from inspector to inspector and from judge, judge to judge. So, is it staff's opinion that the IPMC will offer more consistency on this, or is that something that's going to have to be worked out through the process?
So I'm going to say that the International Property Maintenance Code, property maintenance code in general will, along with policies and procedures and standard practices, right, will become more consistent across the board. You brought up housing, right, specifically properties that might have a tenant who is carrying perhaps a housing choice voucher or something like that. That just builds on the work that we're doing here. There's housing requirements for, for properties and units, that's a whole nother conversation, but it builds on sort of this foundation that properties need to be maintained in general. In fact, a lot of the housing code stuff is, parallels the requirements that you see in the property maintenance code.
Okay, and just one more point, not really a question. HUD is moving to a new type of inspection. It's called INSPIRE. INSPIRE starts with an N, so ha ha. But I would recommend just taking a look through there and seeing if there's anything that makes sense as far as us including in the IPMC moving forward.
Will do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Troy. So like Councilmember Hoheisel, I support all of those. I would like to see the source of income ordinance shared at DAB. I think I sent that to you. I sent the council a link to Lawrence's. Lawrence's did pass that. It was upheld in court when it was challenged. I think that would be beneficial for the city of Wichita to also have. I definitely support additional penalties for habitual offenders. But I would like to know if it is possible for us to remove occupancy from properties that just have so much issue, like forty percent of maybe a multifamily unit has black mold or excessive infestations. Is there a way that we could remove occupancy and force that property owner or manager to fix that problem and provide quality housing for people, rather than just try to do one unit at a time? Because oftentimes, you'll try to treat one unit for bedbugs, they go to another unit, and when they move back in, the bedbugs come back if they don't take care of everything.
So I can tell you, I'm going to tread lightly here, right, but I'm going to tell you that I can actually testify, I've been involved in a process very similar to that, right, in another community, right, where, in fact, it was a fairly large apartment complex, right? It wasn't even just one building, right? It was several buildings that had several units in it. And the city at that point in time came in and through the course of diligence, right, following court judicial processes of establishing a rapport with the court's administrative search warrant after administrative search warrant, demonstrating noncompliance, demonstrating noncompliance, we did eventually and successfully sort of condemn the entire property. There was an incredible community outreach effort that we were able to take those residents, several hundred residents, be able to relocate them, provide them some temporary housing, food, clothes, those kind of things, ordering that the property owner make improvements to the property. I can tell you successfully, at the end of the day, I don't know where it left off, but the property owner was in the process through court orders, right, making those improvements. And eventually, some of those units began to start opening back up after intense inspections through the renovation process, right, through the building permit process. And that community successfully reintroduced quality housing, but it took a really aggressive approach. It was, it was several years in the making, but it is possible. But again, I don't want to misrepresent, we would continue to work with our Law Department and make sure that we follow every step in the process. There are opportunities for that.
Okay. Well, I would love for us to be able to do that. I also think they should pay for that, so we should be able to assess that back to them since they are the ones that left that and the condition it was in. I could think my last thing is, I know that for a while, Ms. Dick Graf was working on a presentation on rental registries. I'd love to have the council see that and/or DABs, because I think that's a necessary conversation, not for the reasons that some people fear in the community, but also so that we can provide resources. Sally had been doing a wonderful job of finding resources, and if we don't know who these individuals are and how to contact them, it's hard to connect them with the resources that have been available historically. So I would love to have that conversation as well as a body to see, one, what the community thinks, and then, two, if this body would be willing to adopt that as well.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to provide two cents regarding some of the extra policy considerations. I have no interest with it going to DAB until we get a legal opinion from Jennifer about what the Kansas state law would allow and what it wouldn't allow when it comes to income discrimination policy. The rental registry and rental license, I have no interest in requiring a license for individuals to be able to do this. I think it's overburdening. So we're talking about housing that's affordable and affordable housing. I think that's an undue burden. So I really have no interest. I'd be interested in seeing what that description is, because from that headline, I'm not interested. Landlord watch list, I don't like any term that's a watch list, so I'd just be interested in what that means as well. The certified preferred landlord list, if somebody wants a certification, I'm necessarily not opposed to that. If they go through a process and want certified, I don't know what a preferred landlord list is as well, so I'd want a description of that beforehand. I have no interest in requiring a local property manager. I think that limits our options to have affordable housing and housing that's affordable in the community. And then extra penalties for repeat offenders. If in the court of law, they are repeat offenders, I imagine the court will establish restrictions on them. And so I would need a lot more in terms of what this actually looks like in practice before I would support any of these.
I'm going to go back to, I think it's slide number sixty-five or sixty-four. Okay, one more. There we go. Before it actually goes to DABs, I think we had a lot of questions that this council asked, and I don't want this presentation to simply be something that they could look up on YouTube. So I would want, again, a lot of data that Councilmember Tuttle and Glasscock have asked about, and I have too. Also, I want to really know the cost of all of this. I think that's important information so community understands. When there are violators, whether it's the tenant or the property owner, there's a cost. There's a cost to the city to go out and investigate these complaints. We'd like it not to rise to that level before it, government has to step in. And so I think that there needs to be much more solidified information before we even bring it out to DABs for further With that, council has no questions, so we will now open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Vince Hancock, President of Delano Neighborhood Association. As you can imagine, having quality properties in our neighborhood is just vital for all of us. We work hard to work together with everybody so that they feel that they live in the best part of Wichita. I don't care if it's in Delano or College Hill, everybody wants that. Generally, we see two types of property maintenance problems, willing and unreachable. The willing might be someone who is physically unable to do their own climbing of the ladder and work on the soffits. They may be financially unable to do that. We have phenomenal nonprofit communities of faith in this town that you mentioned the word Samaritan and they're going, how can we help that little old lady? So we definitely want to be part of those types of solutions. But we also have the unreachable. Maggie knows of a case that we had that went on for decades, unable to reach the property owner. And that becomes so hard and so frustrating for us, because we want to help, but they're just absent. And it's not absentee landlords, these are abandoned properties. So we end up with a process in that particular case. We went from an unoccupied building into squatting, into an overdose that resulted in a death on the property. Then we get fires, and then we just had one in our neighborhood where a house that burnt down because it had been abandoned, oh, now they're finally going to rebuild it as an infill. How cool would it have been if ten or fifteen years ago, we could have maintained that turn-of-the-century home before it burnt down? Just my two cents on, I think we can do better on that. I do respect entrepreneurs that don't want me knocking on their front door, so they set up an LLC or something, and they respect their personal privacy. I get that. But most of these shell companies are being used to obstruct accountability. They're being set up out of state, and there is no way to reach these people. If they're maintaining their property, they're not going to be hearing from me. But we need to work on possibly even some state laws to say, you can't be hiding behind the LLCs anymore. That is not the way we are in this state. It's bogus and it needs to stop. Moving on to my next topic with the time I have. Most of us remember a certain movie where there's a really cool quote that says, "With great power comes great responsibility." Best line in the movie. And sadly, MABCD is one of two city departments that has quasi-law enforcement powers. However, they don't have the responsibility. They have no transparency, no accountability for the nuisance case enforcements. We ask them for details and they say, "It's none of your business unless you're the landlord or the tenant." Neighborhood inspectors have demonstrated, and I've got cases on this, that they're poorly trained. Written to the Law Department says, "I'll give them new training," not even heard back from them on that. Their office staff have such contempt for the taxpayers that fund their department that post-pandemic, they now lock their lobby doors and threaten visitors who request meetings with management to be trespassed from the building. We need MABCD reforms. And I'll take a meeting with any one of you who want to help get that started. I will stand for questions.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Not really any questions. I did want to provide one or two updates. We had worked with a couple of state legislators on a housing committee, Representative Howerton and Representative Howell, trying to get something passed. And it did run into some issues on the state level, so I agree with you a hundred percent that. We do need reforms on the state level as well, and hopefully we can continue those discussions in the upcoming years. The second is, I do believe that we are going out for a new program for our portal, MABCD reporting portal, that will actually give a little more detail to the public to be able to look up cases and see how they're moving along. So I hope to get that moving as well. I've heard
Software revitalization takes time and money. We understand that.
Yeah, so we are moving along on that one, too. So thank you, man.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Member Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Not a question, just broad brushes kind of challenged me a little bit. I've seen a lot of good from our inspectors, and they have some pretty high caseloads. And sometimes it is a challenge, sometimes to follow up when you have four or five hundred cases, but actually more than that. Can't speak to who you're talking about, but I can say in District One, our inspectors do really good work. They follow up. I hear about it from community quite a bit. And again, we have a lot of violations that they're looking at. I haven't seen any of them run from anyone or locker door. And oftentimes, they'll even call you and talk to you on your cell phone. So I just want to put that out there. It's not the whole department. They do a lot of good work, and honestly, they need a lot more funding to keep up with the demands.
By no means do I intend to paint with any brushes. I just have multiple complaints on one person by name that just out of a sense of fairness, I'm not going to say it from here.
You said one person, but when you're initially, you said inspectors in the department. So I just want to make sure we're clear about one person versus the department.
Right. And when you offer free training to those inspectors and the Law Department doesn't even return an email, that is not a confidence builder. Thank you, Brandon.
Hello, Faith Martin, District Two. I agree with a lot of what Vince said. We have multiple vacant properties in our neighborhood, in our neighborhood association. And I promised my neighborhood that I would look into it and took me down quite a rabbit hole, learning about environmental court and all of these things. And then we come to find out that, and I hope you get these metrics when you get data, very few cases that may get to environmental court actually have enough teeth or penalties in it to dissuade out-of-state landlords from doing anything. We have properties that have sat vacant for over five years that we can't do anything about because they don't live in Kansas. So I hope when you're taking some of these changes into effect, which by the way, I really appreciate all the work that you guys are putting into this, because this is something that a lot of us are caring about, it takes a long time to demolish a property. Properties get abatement after abatement after abatement because of dumping of encampments, because of the boards getting taken off, and then there's fires, and the police have to be called out, and fire has to be called out. It's constant, over and over and over. Homes, fourplexes, they just sit vacant, and businesses, vacant for years and years. So I'm hoping that we can find a way to have the council direct the environmental court judges to be more aggressive about how they're going to take care of some of these cases, because as a landowner myself, I wouldn't want it to just be a snap decision and something happens. I know there has to be a process, but years and years is too long, and unfortunately, it hurts those of us that live in the neighborhood that do own property, that are right by these abandoned properties and vermin, and all of these things happen, and homeless people. And all of these things happen in homeless people, so I just hope that when you guys are looking at some of this stuff, it does come to the DAB because a lot of people in neighborhoods have a lot to say about this. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Faith, appreciate that. I don't have all my notes from the meeting that we had some years ago, but I will say some of the challenge in environmental court was, once they get through all of the process, what happens at the end? So you'll have someone who maybe will have tall grass and weeds habitually, or maybe there's some things they need to fix on their property. At the end of that case, do we throw them in jail for that or not? And that's kind of where like the ordinance was at, and it was always tough for court to look at, "Well, I'm going to throw you in jail for not cutting your grass." So some of that was some conversation we had. I think some of this work that we're doing may get us to some better outcomes, but that was like some of the challenges there in the environmental court specifically. And we're trying to find ways to meet those challenges, so we're not necessarily throwing somebody in jail for not cutting their grass, but what can we do to remediate the situation quicker? So just some context to that.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just jumped in there last second. I just want to, I mean, I'd love to see those notes because that is one thing I do hear quite a bit from my district is repeat offenders time after time after time. And we don't want to hit somebody over the head with, you know, fines if they are struggling to be able to come into compliance. I think Suzanne Bose, for example, is doing an awesome job trying to find resources out there, S B mowing, for example. But I would be interested in seeing some kind of system where we can keep track of people who do come into, who have been ticketed for violations time and again, and maybe try and figure some way out to stop that from happening time and time and time again. And I know sometimes it leads to other cases like Faith is talking about here, so that is a discussion. I don't think it pertains to this particular item, but that is a discussion I would be wanting to have here at some point.
Hello, my name is Margaret Shabazz. I live at eleven forty-two North Market Street. I was actually coming to ask if land lots is considered part of property maintenance. I particularly, there's a lot on the end of my block, three houses down from me, that's empty. It's been empty for over ten years. I've been living in the block for seven years. I call and call and call and call and call. The grass gets really, really high, taller than me. I have dogs and I have children, and I walk through it. I have to walk through it, you know? It's been sold about three or four times now, and still the same thing. So we've called the city. All of our neighbors have called the city. We've found the owner. They stay on the west side or whatnot. They don't come. So now we're cutting the grass because it is a hazard. Now, what this is also doing besides being, you know, itchy and all that, so we have rodents, we have raccoons, we have possums, we have the unhoused, building the encampments in here. They're also doing their drugs in here. So you say that what kind of environment hazards does this produce? It's a dangerous hazard because just imagine walking down the street with your child and there's a needle right there in the grass. Your dog goes and runs in that grass to use the restroom or whatnot, and they get stabbed by the needle or something. You know, the glass from the beer bottles. It is a huge hazard and it's dangerous. And these are some of the things that we're dealing with all the time. Also, when companies leave an area, so that's property, right, and now they're abandoned for years, does this also cover that? When they have all these encampments, because I personally have not seen the help that we need to make sure these encampments do not continue to come. We call the police, you know, and I just don't, I just want to make sure that it's covered because these are dangers. And there's a lot of kids in my neighborhood. I mean, I'm in my neighborhood, so even if it wasn't a kid, for me, I want to be safe.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that. Just some context, everyone gets due process. So on that lot, if you call today and our inspectors got out there, let's say by Friday, that property owner has thirty days to address whatever that issue is.
They haven't been showing up. They have not come out at all. That's why we've taken it in our own hands to cut the grass ourselves.
Back to what I was saying, they have thirty days to address it themselves as a property owner. If they have not addressed it, then city staff will come back and look to see if it's been addressed. And then at that point, it could be abated, meaning like the grass could get cut. At that point, they've been notified once, so they don't have to get notified again, but we have to be proactive. Our department is not, so we're not out driving around all the time looking for that. That means that once the grass gets tall again, you would, or someone else would have to let us know again that it's there, and then it could get taken care of. But initially, there's always that thirty-day due process. It frustrates everybody, but legally, you are given due process per the Constitution. So you'll get notified, and then you have a chance to address it yourself, much like a lot of the out-of-state landlords and property owners and things that we've talked about. Sometimes they really don't care and they'll just let it grow, but they still have thirty days to address it if they want to. It's great that you're taking that on, but I'm just giving you the context that they legally have thirty days to take care of it. And that frustrates a lot of people, to include you. But once that thirty days is passed, one of the inspectors whose case it's under will go back and check and then make sure it gets on the list to get the grass cut or whatever that issue is. And then after that, you just keep calling in. We know that's frustrating because we continue to hear about it, but that is legally what happens.
So after thirty days, what if no one ever comes out, though? No inspector, nobody to come? If the grass grows as tall as me, that's longer than thirty days of growing, right?
So it depends on when you call. So we won't do anything until it hits twelve inches. So if you call and it's at eight, it's noted, but it can't be addressed until twelve, and that's per our code. After twelve inches, that notification would go to them if you let them, let us know again, and they have thirty days. In thirty days, if we get rains like we have today, it may be twice your height, but they still have thirty days no matter what to address it. After the thirty days, an inspector would get back out there, and I mentioned to our last speaker, they do have a lot of caseloads. So when they do get back to it and see that it has not been addressed by that property owner, then it would be added to a list of getting the grass cut or mattresses picked up or whatever that might be. And then that'd get addressed at that point. And then after that, then the neighborhood or whoever would have to be proactive and look at that and see, when it's at ten inches or eleven inches, go ahead and call because we probably won't be out there within ten minutes. It might be the next day that grass might hit that twelve inches, and then we'll start getting it abated. But they have to legally get one notification per year, for sure. So that's why we talk about tall grass and weeds and stuff early, like April and May, before it starts getting there. Once they get that one notification, that was it. But again, they have thirty days from when the violation is there. So let's say you think it's twelve inches and it's really ten, and then inspector gets out there and sees it's ten inches. They're not in violation. Even though the ten inches isn't good and there's rodents and all of that, they have to actually be in violation to get rolled up. So once that happens, they have thirty days.
Understood. I'm just bringing up a safety issue and something that maybe needs to be reconsidered because, you know, Broadway is terrible as well. That's one block away from me, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say thank you so much for coming and sharing your concerns. We have put a lot of work and resources in the midtown area. Unfortunately, it's not enough because there's still problems. I'm not sure who specifically you're working with, with M A B C D about the empty lot, but I'm happy to try to help facilitate whatever conversations or accountability we need for those properties. And I can speak to, at the beginning of the year, we brought the cleaning up of the encampments in-house so that we could address them quicker. Last year and the previous years, when we were using a contractor, they had quite some time to address, I think up to fourteen days to clean up the encampment. So it seemed like even longer when you'd walk by it or drive by it, you know, several times a day or live in the area. It seems like thirty days for those encampments to get cleaned up, but that is something that we brought in-house. And typically, they're addressed within forty-eight to seventy-two hours-ish. But I think also, sometimes when we walk by them or drive by them, we assume that someone else has turned them in. So I would just encourage you or your neighbors to make sure that you either let me know or email or call the hot team. That way, we can make sure that it gets on the list. I think sometimes we assume that somebody else has turned it in, and sometimes that's not the case. So it takes a little bit longer and it just creates more frustration with the neighborhood. So I'm happy to give you my contact information and help you to make sure that we get those things addressed. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. I feel for you. I know, but I feel for you. As the weather gets nicer, it seems like encampments are just exploding, so it's tough. I also want to compliment you for taking your own hands and doing some of the mowing, neighbor doing the mowing. So that shows a lot of initiative, and thank you for doing that. You shouldn't have to, but thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alamsiv. I'm from Afghanistan and Vegeta is like Afghani family, one hundred thirty family is here in Vegeta. He's my translator. I a little bit speak English. Yes.
Okay, as the place that we live in, which we make, if there's an issue as the houses and stuff like that, we make an order for work order, and no one shows up on time. And whenever they show up, like after a long time, they charge us for what they do, which we pay like on time. We pay the rent and everything on time, but they still don't show up on time and stuff. And we're like in Section Eight and stuff like that, but they still charge us for the work they do in the house. And the issues that the apartments and houses we're having are not solved on time. We need a lot of support and help because all the houses and everything are the same. And the place where we live in, there's some houses, they charge us like twelve hundred. The other, they will charge us for fourteen hundred, even though they're all the same. We are thirty-eight houses of Afghan community. We are still looking for help. We need someone to support us. And we don't know anybody that can help us to like, because he's also saying that we're not treated, being treated right. Okay, you guys can come in and see the houses. We have been treating the apartments and the houses right. We have keep them clean and everything right as the local rules. But they're still telling us that they, that we have to move out whenever the time is up for our contract. And then after that, they also told us they won't be accepting our Section Eight no more. After August, they told us we will be kicking you guys out. You guys have to find a place. We need a lot of help and support if you guys can help us with that.
Thank you very much for helping translate for your father. We'll start with councilmember comments. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'd give us your contact information, we'll get you in touch with our housing department. They do administer the Section Eight vouchers. And we'd be interested in exploring your story a little more and being able to do what we can to help you find housing. I'm not sure that if the landlord decides to stop accepting Section Eight, I do believe that's within their right. But we can help try and find other housing. And if you feel like they've been unfair to you in charging some things, we do have a landlord retaliatory ordinance. And I believe charges, undue charges, or perhaps charging you more for reporting violations is part of that as well. So if you'd give us your contact information, I'll be sure to reach out to you and try and figure this out and try and help you guys as best as I can.
Who do you want me to give the contact numbers?
Right there is fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We have a couple more. Councilmember Glasscock.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hoheisel said all my comments.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say thank you so much for coming. It takes a lot of courage to come, share your story, especially when you feel like you're being treated unfairly. So as Councilmember Hoheisel said, if you share your information, we'll see what we can do to help, and thank you so much for coming.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. I wouldn't be able to sleep if I didn't say this. I just want to encourage you to keep all of the documentation that you just talked about. Get that now. Because you came to the council meeting, you just never know what they might try to do to you. So if you have all your documentation, it can prove that you've been asking for these things and what's been going on and how you've been treated. If they try to do something to you legally, at least you'll have that evidence. But I've just seen it too many times where somebody spoke up for themselves and then they're treated horribly by whoever it is, their property manager and landlord. So when you leave this place, make sure you get all of that information together and keep it ready, just in case they try to do something to you.
Okay, and also, before I translate that, whenever we make an order like for work orders, nobody else shows up because for me personally, I live in the same place, and water leaks and other stuff have been coming. And it's like not the first, second, or third time. It's the fifth, sixth time for every house have been damaging our personal property. And they say it's not our fault and anything, but what we think is it should be their fault because whenever we making our work order, they should come and fix it the first time, second time, or the third time. But every time it damaged our personal property, we have to take care of it by our own pocket.
I agree with you a hundred percent. If you're doing your job and paying the rent and doing the request, they should be fixing it, and if they're not, that's on them.
And whenever they come send to clean up the water that has been coming into the apartments from the rain, they even charge us for that.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to hear your story sometime, how you got here and stuff. Quick question. I'm interested, just marketing-wise, how did you hear about this meeting? How'd you hear about to come to speak tonight?
And you see if we got a great caseworker sitting behind there, Jenna? She told us about the meeting and stuff. She told us that we can come in and tell our story and see if we can get any help or support.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate your help, too.
All the thirty-eight families were going to come in, but we have told them that we will go and see if we can get any help or support because they don't feel any treatment, right treatment, or anything like that. And we hope to get some support and help.
Sure we can help you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you're leaving your contact information with the manager as well, but I would-
I know you're leaving your contact information with the manager as well, but I would take you up on the offer to come and see as well. And so please include that as part of it so we can see firsthand and see stories firsthand. So telling about it is one thing, then also seeing it is another. Again, thank you for coming.
I just wanted to add a couple of, please give that contact information. I just want to say thank you so very much for translating. As a first generation immigrant, that moved me. So thank you for helping share when some of us can't speak for ourselves and you helping. I know that there's so many wonderful Afghan immigrants that are here in our community. And just like you said, you're trying to do the right thing, paying on time, making sure that the property is well kept and all you're asking for is to be treated fairly. And so thank you for speaking up and sharing your story. And I know that the city manager will make sure that we get all of this, but I also encourage you, there are some individuals right in the back, they're part of the local media. And you have amazing stories of triumph and challenges to come to this country. And I want you to share more of the good things about your lives here, but we want to make sure that when you're not treated fairly in this community, that we don't stand for that. And so thank you for sharing today, coming to the council meeting and saying this in front of this council, that we want to get to solutions. So I appreciate you again. Thank you very much for helping to translate and helping to share the story.
You're very welcome. There are like many other issues too, but these were like the many, the main issues that we wanted to you guys work on and help us with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Daniels. I live at 14700 Timberlake Road in Wichita. I'm the president of Rental Owners Incorporated and I'm the government relations officer for the group. I've been a member of the group for 30 years. We've worked with the city on several occasions in a very hand-in-hand proactive matter. The nuisance police response ordinance was one. We put our support completely behind that and I think that's been a very beneficial thing and still is to this day. Our charter, we were formed in 1967. We're a nonprofit group and our charter is to help good landlords become better landlords. We do not have any members in our group that I'm aware of that think differently than that because it's simply not a place that they fit in. The story that they just gave is absolutely heartbreaking that anybody could be treated that way. And under no circumstance would we ever support any landlord or any group that's doing that. I would encourage the council to find any possible way that they can to reach out of state landlords and absentee landlords and to be able to bring them, bring power to bear upon them. Hiding in Oklahoma, coming up here to your apartment complex and collecting the money, making a few orders and rushing back over the state line again. I know specifically one complex where this happens regularly. And it is such a minority of landlords that do these. The vast majority of us are responsible people. I would never ask a tenant to live in an apartment that I would not live in myself. And I have properties that are all bills paid with lower income. They are still clean, they are safe, they're nice properties, they're affordable, but it's a safe environment. And we would love to work with the commission or council, excuse me, in crafting any of this legislation and give what input we have. I've done this for almost 40 years as my sole source of income. And so I know quite a bit about it from the other side. But we, we definitely would support some of the changes that were talked about this evening, but in particular, bringing, finding some way to bring absentee landlords into compliance. Because it seems to be, this has been a problem that goes all the way back 20 years ago. They were, Kurt Schroder was fighting the same thing with central, when it was called central inspection. He simply could not figure a way to get ahold of these people. So anyhow, any resource that we have and my time is yours if I could be part of that process and help in any way. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I wouldn't, can you please give your contact to the city manager?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say I really do appreciate your words there. We are not trying to be vindictive or crackdown. Most landlords are good people who want to care for their property and provide housing for people. So I do appreciate that offer. And I think we will be reaching out to you to, to get your input on this. So I appreciate you coming up here, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Harlan Bascom. I live at 5514 South Santa Fe, District Three. And most of you, if not all of you, know my history. One thing I've heard multiple times tonight is dealing with out-of-state landlords. Until you find some way of doing that, you're not going to be able to resolve those particular issues. They, they just ignore the notices. Certainly we can abate properties that are nuisance issues, but when it comes to a housing issue, there's not a whole lot we can do dealing with those particular issues. So just wanted to be short and sweet, give you my benefit, the benefit of my experience.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Harlan, it's an evening meeting. Short and sweet doesn't exist here. No, thank you for that. I, I appreciate that and I agree with you 100%. I think one of the things we are running into and some of the, the solutions that we've, we've really kind of investigated is the interstate commerce clause that prevents us from being discriminatory towards out-of-state. But I really am curious to see what we can do on, on the municipal level to actually address out-of-state landlords as well. So I do appreciate you bringing that point up because, you know, we've seen it with some, you know, several properties in our district that it's just tough to get ahold of people like that. It is a shell game, as was discussed, discussed earlier. So I, I am curious to see what we can do to address that.
I think I might as well.
We'll continue with public comment. Anyone else who would like to address the council? I see.
Mayor, members of the council. My name is Richard Harris. I'm a former member of the National Panel, Consumer Arbitrators for the Better Business Bureau. And I've served on a number of city boards and councils in past years, including being chairman of a couple of neighborhood organizations that were predecessors to the DABs. Absentee landlords are a colossal nuisance to the community. I think that's a pretty succinct way to put it and I think we all know that from experience. We also know that there are landlords within our community that do not take care of the property as they should or keep the commitments that they make to their tenants about property management. And I have had recent, just coincidentally, recent experience with that myself. And it was quite surprising. Point blank, I was bait and switched when I moved into the place that I just recently moved into. And none of the agreements that were made initially were going to be kept until I put up a fight, literally had to put up a fight, including a requirement to meet this basic city code safety requirement. And it was quite surprising that this wasn't just some strange slumlord. This was a pretty basic middle-class landlord. To the issue at hand, I would encourage you to be interested in the hybrid method. I, I do think that you need to be realistic and acknowledge that there's a difference between chronic repeat offenders and incidental occasional offenders. Also, I think it's important that you differentiate between owner occupied and renter occupied properties. Because I think setting a lower standard of compliance or, or a more generous and tolerant nature with owner occupied residences is probably somewhat realistic because those people have chosen their living circumstance, whereas with renter occupied, that is not the case. The renter is very often the victim of the landlord and at the mercy of them as a result of contractual obligations. And the states just notoriously one-sided landlord-tenant laws. As to demolition, I would encourage you to continue to make the city council final say on this because there are issues that only the city council can address, that simply can't be addressed by an administrative board. Furthermore, the Board of Code Standards and Appeals is made up of professionals in the industry of construction and demolition. They have an inherent economic bias towards demolition. And your role here is more of an accountability to the community than to your pocketbook. Finally, on section eight issues, we, I've served on the Housing Committee for the Homeless Task Force and one of the things that comes up over and over is how people are basically being forced out of section eight by landlords that won't take care of the property and find all kinds of excuses to evict the tenants so they don't have to comply. There's a simpler way around this that you don't probably find a lot of enthusiasm for right at the moment, but you need to think about this. Some years ago, it was proposed to the city council that there'd be a requirement that every time a place is put up for rent, it has to be inspected by the city and approved. And that would put an end to some of the abuses that we see with landlords moving people into unfit housing. Moreover, if we require them to abide by section eight standards, that would give landlords a lot more incentive to go with section eight housing and provide the necessary housing that we need. This is all part of how you think about housing, but above all, an important part of thinking about housing is realizing that we're talking about where people must live their daily lives. We already require inspections of restaurants, groceries, bars, even businesses have routine or random fire inspections. It's not unreasonable to say that where a person has to live their life day in and day out should be required to be inspected before it's put to them as rental property. Overall, I just encourage you to keep in mind the needs of the community first and the needs of the commercial sector second. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. To the speaker, I believe you brought up a really good point about the difference between owner occupied and tenant occupied properties. And that would be something that in a report, I'd be interested in seeing a difference in terms of either language ordinance or M A B C D enforcement when it comes to owner occupied versus tenant occupied.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll continue with public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Some of the speakers have brought up just the point that out-of-state landlords, property owners are the bane of all of our existence sometimes. And I wonder, although I know one of my colleagues is not interested, I am interested in knowing what we can legally do about out-of-state property owners and landlords. I have many suggestions, but I would like to know legally, what could we do, if anything, to address that? And outside of state statute, does home rule authority for Wichita allow us to do anything more to address those issues? The lack of response, the lack of action, just something rather than just kind of sitting here complaining about that. And not, I don't mean it like that. We're all frustrated by it, but just what can we actually do about it, if anything?
Councilmember Law Department will look into that and get you a full response.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. To correct one thing that Councilman Johnson said, it's not that I'm opposed to, it's not that I want a restriction on any, or trying to figure out the phrases. I don't want to completely restrict out-of-state landlords. And so if there's a way that we can make sure to get them into compliance, I'm very interested in that. I just don't want a blanket description or a prohibition as the slide had presented that would require a property manager in the city. And so I think I would be interested in looking at options, just not a full prohibition on out-of-state landlords.
I stand corrected.
With that, I see no further comments. So I move that the city council receive and file the presentation.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Appointments to City Manager Selection Advisory Committee.
All right, council members. I think we all received an email this afternoon. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm okay with the, the names provided. I do, I would like to say, and I don't know if this is something we could do later on, that I would like to see maybe a spot filled by somebody who's a labor representative. And then also, and I know we've had some conversation about neighborhood people, potentially maybe offering a spot to win as well. So those are maybe just the two things I'd like to throw out there. And again, this is maybe something that we can add to further on the process because I believe right now they are just going to be looking at the, the contract to come in to actually do the search. So just my two cents.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Hoheisel. I also would like to advocate to add Aaron Bastian to the list, given his experience not only at Fidelity and the generational family connection in Wichita, but also his experience in Oklahoma City and what he can bring to the table, not only in seeking a search firm, but also seeking a candidate for a city manager that can be a visionary and bring things together like our current manager. I think that Aaron would be a great addition to this and he has offered his support and help for this. And when I think about the contributions that he's made in, in Fidelity Bank to Project Wichita and trying to move our city forward, I just think that this committee could benefit from his involvement.
Any further comments? I see none. I move to approve this selection advisory committee.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
Mayor, normally you would list the individuals when you make appointments.
I shall do that. Do you want to comment first? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes. I would like to add Aaron, I would move to add Aaron Bastian to this list.
That would make the list, I think, 12, which would be an even number.
We could also take up what Councilmember Hoheisel said and add labor to it.
So I feel like there would be three individuals in banking that then would be represented in this committee and I think that's an over-representation in banking. I'll have for, if anyone wants to chime in, Councilmember Glasscock.
I think if we continue to expand this list, it's going to get unyieldy at some point. I think 11 is a good number, 12, I think, 13, you're starting to get a lot. There's plenty of opportunities for people in our community to engage in this process as well. We're going to be hosting town halls, we're going to be hosting engagement opportunities. Everybody will have the, like, the chance to be involved in this process. And so I don't want to just continue to grow and grow and grow this list.
Councilmember Johnson. I'll read the list of committee members and a little background for each. The first one is, I'll actually go by districts. I'll start with District One, Frida Byrd, President of Matlock Heights Neighborhood Association. District Two, Jennifer McDonald, nonprofit professional and former small business owner and HR professional. District Three, Noch Vung, USD 259 School Board Member and WSU Faculty Member. District Four, Josh Shore. District 4, Josh Shorter, COO of Integrated Components and Chairman of the Kansas Manufacturing Council. District 5, Andrea Scarpelli, retired bank executive and United Way volunteer. District 6, Jordan Walker, CEO of Bonfire Strategy. Sherry Utash, President of WSU Tech. Brad Elliott, Chairman and CEO of Publicly Traded Equity Bank Shares. Dan Pear, Attorney at Hinkle Law Firm and former Chair of the WSU President's Search Committee. Patty Kohler, Retired CEO of JR Custom Metal Products in District 4. Darrell Kelly, Air Force Veteran and Director of Business Partnerships at the Kansas Leadership Again, I move to approve this list of individuals for the selection advisory committee.
I will second it again.
Motion and a second, Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. If the council does decide to add maybe one or two spots at a later time, that'll be something that council can decide.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Councilmembers Tuttle.
Sorry. I would like us to consider these 11 individuals who we may or may not approve here in a minute to see what they think. I mean, they may think, yes, we could, we're not hearing all the voices we think we should, or no, I think we've gotten too big and it's groupthink, and maybe we need a subcommittee for something. But if we really are charging these people with leading this process, I think we should give them the opportunity to at least do it. So I wish them luck, and I thank them for all their service. I think that this is an outstanding group of people who represent different sectors, and I'm quite proud of my colleagues who would like to say thank you, that I think we all did a lot of research, we all took a lot of time. I heard lots of conversations, lots of questions among us, that everybody took this very seriously. I said this may be one of the most serious decisions I make while I'm on council, and I think everybody agreed upon that. So thank you for everyone.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I echo everything Councilman Tuttle said specifically regarding if the board believes that we should add people, I'd be very open to that. If they think there are voices that aren't being heard, I think we should give them the opportunity to do that, and if they come back with that, I'd be open to it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes 7-0. We will continue with council member appointments now. Are there any appointments from council members? I see none. Councilmember comments at this time. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Of course, who else? Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first off, thank you, give a thank you to the first responders who were out today. Plenty of people in the flash flooding got caught up, they were out there moving cars, they were out there rescuing people. We have at least two reports of people who were rescued from, from essentially drowning because of the currents. I'd also like to say that right now we're addressing the Blackley Flood Plain. I think we're about got that project wrapped up, but after that, we are going to start using the same funding source to actually address what we refer to as nuisance flooding, although it's not really considered a nuisance to the people whose cars get taken downstream and whose basements get flooded in a lot of parts of our town. So we do have that in time or in plan coming down the line. The last thing I'd like to say real quick is tomorrow is the ribbon cutting for the Clap Park All-Access Playground, making sure that every kid has a chance to actually enjoy being a kid. The ribbon cutting is at 11 o'clock. I'd love to see as many faces out there as possible. This is going to be a great day, I think. It's supposed to be dry, the sun's supposed to come out for tomorrow at least, so hopefully that helps. And there will be a lot of people out there, the neighborhood president will be out there handing out ice cream coupons as well. So I think it's going to be a great day and a great day for the kids in our city. Thank you. I'd hope to see as many people out there as we can.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. Just on the rain, I have a friend in east Wichita that has a rain gauge that holds eight inches. It was full, and another downpour came, so he estimates there's about 10 inches of rain fell on his house. So a lot of rain. On a lighter note, the mayor and I did not get last in the egg toss. We got third in our group, we'll leave it at that, and we did beat the county. So, county, yeah, thank you.
With that, I just want to say thank you to the community for coming out to Riverfest, and it still continues until Saturday. Full disclosure, I was a schooner mate back in 2002, and a schooner mate is the, one of the high school ambassadors for the River Festival. And so, it is a very near and dear, community-building event that I hope more people get to enjoy. I'm really looking forward to Fiesta del Rio Day on Friday, and on Wednesday, tomorrow, is Military Appreciation, and it's a salute to military, so there will be fireworks tomorrow night. And one last thing, come back out to City Hall tomorrow at 5:00. We will have a town hall that will be a little bit different than your traditional town hall. It will be moderated by Kansas Leadership Center, and we will have a discussion about sharing services, sharing opportunities between the city, the county, and USD 259. So I look forward to hosting Chairman Ryan Beatty of the county, as well as President of the School Board, Diane Albert, here in these city hall chambers. And again, thank you to the staff for staying late tonight and accommodating the second of four evening meetings. Again, this council has tried to make council meetings more accessible and much more engaging so that we can get community feedback. And so, I'm very appreciative of this council for last year having four evening meetings and now having four more this year. So thank you to all of you for coming out tonight. And again, be safe. The motto is turnaround, don't drown. So thank you all very much. And with that, I will move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes 7-0 with the verbal vote. Have a great night.